Our Arti Piojok Boyi, Arti Sheni Sheni Kweku Sani Keniti Ole Yorale Lati Soro. Like Jekui Onawosuki, Akoko Iberi Mawa, Akoko Orosiso Oma Wa. Nitorinankoh Abewa, Ki Bogo Apatakwata Nomadi Atilakwalaga, Ki Awagedebe Ashiwa. Olonolodumari, Amabawalolone, Eh, Kilawashenone, Etogu Lamualone. Odui Shaimo Loku, Etimawa Kuto Doni, Edetimabi Ashinshi, Yo Ba, Awakomaladilawa. Awakisibawalomo, Lawanino Ela Chi Olo Manu. Apelai Nini Town Hall Meeting, Awakwonobeta Hall Meeting, Awonobeda De. Oni Kalandia Oshie, Awan North America, Ni For What So What Papo. Iro America, Iro Canada, Wawa Paraponwani, Eh Eh, Ahri Koi Dolunyakina Analu Domo Niai Kwe A Doma Asheni. Inumi Dum, Nu Batimubon Kamba I, Ah, Ilana Ekuché. Eh Dube Babi Me Yo, Abellinkambi, Merakpele Kamimiya Nitevi. Ne Pa Benko, Eh Niye Niate Dera Komawa, Unkonmuka Vekage Fuwa, Eh Mi Formade, Eh Mi Falakwalaga. Eh Mi Ponile Mi Fali, Eh Dua Mi Fa, Ah Ni Ganga Papa, Nitorinukwe Omo Bruku, Olodotie. Eh Ba Yi, Eh Olu Kontemi Uyipada, Ehri Kemi Loko Mi Babaru, Ehli Olu Kumimbe Nipe, Ni Eh, She I You Ni. Eh Babawa Omo Burigu, Arti Baba Mi, Lemmi Bam Michile, Awamate Talama. Fi Du Itama Ju, Gia Itama Ju, Siara Watama, Fi Da I Itama Figi, Uria Mo Ta, Itama Feedu Itama Fikegi. Itama, Yosi Arawa, Eh Gen Kondya Koshono, Si Odo, Baba Mi, Doctor Lemmi, Bam Michile. Eh, Oh Ya, Eh Ki Awalale, Ki Baba Wa, Omo Buriguona, Okemalale, Ki Baba Mi Lemmi, Bam Michile. Kawaa, Losi Ikuili Tuti Okon, Eh Shiu.
Moki Bogo, Awaini Awawo, Awati Apeniti Eh Jewa, Adupay Pukola Wanyi. Eh Olodumari, Amatuili Ationo, Nishio, Depa De Ti Awashenone, Awneka Bamore. On Bogo Asilo Gagebi Eto, Eh Shie Puko, Ti Apeniti, Yes Jey Pe Wa. Oku Beiti Emguwa, Jaki Jado, Bebe. Si Salusa Osa, Si Omarayefi Manana De Dieloka, Yusawa Soo, Yusawa Soma. Yusawa Shae Puti Shebale Oro, Yuru Ba, Wani Odoto Bayla, Yurubu. Ododon La Ara Osa, Ododon Unanipuwa, La Umapé. Awaini Lana, Motungbarami Edelone, Motungbesi Wadepi Washimashi Niko Bosu. Etimawa, Lana Kuto Doni Kwe Odudewa, Oh Ki Shae Ma Fuduko. Eh Wan Kafidile, Eh Bawa Gletui, Eh Jekukarile, Eh Jekukaryoku. Kilawan Toya Kamaa, Ehri Piyawba Pawa, Awaini Yawani Noto Ma, Ni Nui Ma, Ni Nui Ye, Nwambepi Duwambilo Ni. Betme Yo Mama, Alare Uteba, Eh Yesa Wan Kafidile, Kemapa Wakalo, Rukotino Yipada, Omo Buriguonle Me Ye, Eh Shie Puko.
Eh Shimbaba Wa, Baba Bam Michile, Oh Ya, Eh Jeki Shukutu Tuyangbani Shuludi.
Eh, Kusiyonti Agodo Shile, Yolodumari, Sorry, Olodumari, Onodawa Sile, Yubanibitigogo Wati Padeloni. Olodumari, Onan Ni, Aofiberi, Nitorinon, Ah, Kesi. Iya Fi Wa, Aramide Ti Amio, Ki Wabawa Fi Abdura, Shide Padeyi. Boya Mochi De, Yupadi.
Odah, Timo Pati De, Kusintoburumbé, Moshe Bi Arulusho Agutala Aningwa. Eh, Eh Jaki Baba Wa, Odusho Aguton, Kamfa Dua, Kamfishi De Tu, Mwa, Eh Shiu. Pastor, Ari Bilola, Eh Badua Fungwasa.
Olu Alonolodumari, Adupelo Wanyi Nitorivipe, Eh Niye Nyalon. Agbe Ni Ga, Hmm, Eni Yantese Shewa, Te Shewani Eni Oto. Adedupay Wipe, Eh Shewani Yoruba, Alonagbe Ni Ga, Eh Ba Opewa. Awabeyi, Afebere Padeti Lole, Afekedala Komawa. Obue To Pata, Atunsi So Atunisi Shi, Emadika Si So, Emiye Kowakewa. Alonidiyayedi, Si Eo Ye, Niteme, Emadje Kujepa Wao, Agbadura Fu, Awonoli Wa. Alonba Ma Fu, Nokwata Gbarao, Ati Loli Baba, Pada Quata, Alonewa, Fiongokonkongon. Babawa Lora Emi Won, Itagbilowata Fakeba, To Do Mineraile Yoruba, Alore Jeku Shishi. Awofe Tagesilel, Ori Lady, Ori Lewa, Alonugugu Itagesile, Jeku Dawo Duro. Awofe Ogumajeku Jawao, Alore Shanu Wao, Awmabeyi Ga, Ni Pare Omo Bu, Itweni. Eh Jekafi Opwe, Ati Furukonla, Ni, Ni Atolote Abiri, Te Asitirikba, Belwa Mi Dari Goju. Eh Pa Se Gesu Kristi, Oluwawa, Ah.
Ami.
Onti O, Kamba Inimon Eto, Oni, Latiche Afihon. Ah, Ioni, Ilewa, Eliti Wa Okofu Abai.
Gentleman, National Anthem of the Newly Formed Uduwawa Nation.
Eh, Shie Puko, Ke Amates Wadju. Baye Aoshie Afihon Alano, Arti Gakke Diwa. Gagabi Yashemo Oduni Alano Wa, Woke Shea Imofu Loko. Baba Totoba Ba Oniwah. Waje, Baba Ti, Wonsi Aragba Bogo, Onti Andasi Walara. Wao Orochi Ojo Ori Waa, Wao Orochi Wete Waka, Wao Orochi Gadjuma, Sugan, Wani. O Mineralale Yoruba, Ondodjewa Logu. Bogo Awon Oray Wosi, Eliti Wonsi Inlawo, Wao Ogobe. Wonsi Chante Kamope, Anise, Laber Buti Wukori, Auba Ominera Ni. Wonsin Fuwanimoro Ni Bogo Ba Kamaja, We Awatiri Oko Ilé, Ilé Yoruba Bayi. Awotungodori Oko Apa, Kile Omoba Adawo, Wonsi Ogwa Aba, Mofinto. Wonsi Ogwa Aba, Mofinto, Wani Abati Obinolomore Epo. Kosaniti Wonsi, Biye Nati Erasi Wani, Eh, Bay Ni Kashi. Oh Wadi Pe Baba Wa Yi, Oru Kawa, Onan Longro Waa, Banji, Akinto Ye. Wani Akela Waa, Akentia Awansi Dei, Otito Walo Ye, Awotwa Ankame. Awansi Fekile Yoruba Koji Didé. Yato Seku Wanjia Aba Oje, Ni Nui Ma Ojokon, Motunko Araye Jor. Wala Anulodju, Wanjia Ori Ki Waa, Ni Betiwanti Wani Adukiti, Oh Kalara Ori Ki Waa, Otasimi Letifyo. Wani, Oma, Osha Nene Ota Obe Kedireliri. Ladue Wii, Ye Kwe, Eh Ni Ti, Oma Okuta, To Shanu Okuta, To Kbe Ike Di Eliri. Ti Abade Betiwampeni Oké, Ni Neni Adukiti, Eh Ori Awokuta, Me Je Jitu Wobi Arawo. Eh Ni Ti Anso Rorayi, Onan Ni, Alano Wa, Baba Wa, Odjokma Abawa, Banji Akinto Ye. Ke Eh Shio Joko Fungwa, Kewa Ki Bogo Ilé. Washi Mutu Sibewa, Wati Amutu Waa. You To Buy, Aha, Moki Bogo Ni Pe Kowadju, Eh, Eh Kupa Deo. Enomaidon Fue Padero Le, Eh, Oh, Oh, Xedia, Kintoja, Ni Torepe Motunge, Share Mani Pademena. Ah, Odu Arti Deo, Nkankani Fa, Wasile Ma. The Nigerian machinery that is holding the Yoruba nation down is a formidable machinery. It has been, it have become expert in holding people down for sixty years plus. And therefore, we must know we have a formidable task in trying to pull ourselves free from them. I know that you are ready. I know that Ilana Omo Dua is ready and Ilana Omo Dua will achieve the victory for the Yoruba people. But remember, we are not doing it by ourselves alone. There are hundreds of other organizations out there. Most of them are affiliated to Ilana Omo Dua today, but there are very many that are not affiliated to Ilana Omo Dua. Whether they are affiliated to us or not affiliated to us, we must treat them like brothers and sisters in this struggle. There is no other struggle, it's just one single struggle for the salvation, for the liberation. Of the Yoruba nation from the rubble and the house of poverty and insecurity that Nigeria has become. So congratulations, everybody who is a member of this struggle. Congratulations doubly. To all of us who are members of this struggle through Ilana Omo Dua. We have had our troubles in the past. But we are not surrendering to any trouble. We know that we have been gifted with, with God's blessing for victory. Because why do I say that? Because the hand of God is manifesting everything that we have been doing. Ilana Omo Dua is just slightly over one year old. And it is now an organization with membership in all countries of the world. A few days ago, when they said there was some weather trouble in Cambodia, near the roof of the aft. I called the coordinator there. And he was very grateful that Baba remembers them in their difficult, our, our, our bad weather. Yes, we are everywhere. Our, from Japan. We constantly get very important inputs from Japan. From most countries of the world, we get inputs from time to time. People are calling and making suggestions. This is what we should do, this is what we should not do. For instance, we said, we were, we were, we decided that we are going to call to stop the lectures in Ekiti and, and Osho. For obvious reasons. The Nigerian machinery wants to hold an election, elections on our land. Even though everybody of importance in Nigeria has now said that the nineteen ninety-nine constitution is a fraud. If we allow them to hold that, that election in our land, we are conceding that we are slaves. They are free to do whatever they like to us and we do not have a vote. There are some of us who have anxiety about whether we will lose in court. This question is not about whether we win or lose a court case. It is about our registering, our profound rejection of election that treats us like slaves. And it is one of the materials that we are building together. That we will use in the international community in the end to fight for our courts. I repeat, just letting them conduct the election without our putting up a measurable protest. Will hurt our cause in the end. Because it will show that we accept that we, we are what they say we are. They say we are slaves, but we must tell the world that we are not slaves. So I congratulate you. It's, it's a great thing to find that so many people from all so many countries of the world. Are gathered together and holding this meeting. I welcome you all. I welcome everybody, man, woman or child. Who are, who is up and ready to contribute to the Yoruba struggle. We hold no animosity against any nation. We Yoruba hold. Odabeni Pe.
Oh Ya.
Ayeniyewati Enbowanile, Baba, Alana, Awanane Watin Soro, Latia Ti Ataro. Ehri Kwe, Baba Yi, Oh, Wasi Ka, Kete Kete, Eliro Yoruba Nation Yi. Kolon Kubawa, Jeku Wopwe Fungwa.
Asho.
Kolon Jeki Ari Wopwe.
Asha.
Kure Kwe, Wati Jasi Wajire, Fi Ra Yoruba. Hmm, Wati Mbabo, Odjotipe. Abami Solakbe Be, Baba Je, Om Kota, Om Mata. Baba Ti Koa Polokwawe Niya, Ni Le University.
Eh, Shie Puko, Ike Di Mi Omo Burigu. Eh, Baba Ti Ba Wasoro Ishide, Wati Padadi Bayi. Ti Obashidi, Onti Okuti Wanso, Eh, Ki Waton Bamishi Ojo Okofu. Ki Wale Zukari, Oro Ishide Ti Wambabo.
I'm mute, okay. So Moki Bogo Niwaku Wadju. Eh, Said, most of what I want to say, but that is a very important thing. And I will just say it in one or two sentences. The. The host keeps unmute, uh, muting me. Hello, are you hearing me?
Yeah, yes, I'm going, sir.
Okay. It is not enough that we should just take our country and leave Nigeria. It is very important that we must purge ourselves of Nigeria. The diseases of Nigeria have hung on to the Yoruba nation. A great deal of us now live because the country, the whole country has been popularized. And people who have a right to, to, to have a good standard of life cannot. And so they are looking for self, self, self in everything. Even this struggle for the Yoruba self determination is seen by many of our compatriots as a means of making a living. When you see it like that, you become a disruptive, a disruptive influence. In whatever you are doing. I beg of you. I would take time another time to address our meeting concerning this matter of the greed. The lying, the dishonesty, the corruption that now hangs very heavily upon the character of most Yoruba people. We cannot make a success of our nation when we get it, if we let Nigeria go without. We are not trying to create a small replica of Nigeria. We are, we must be trying to create the proper Yoruba nation. The place where the objective of government is the well-being of the people. The kind of government that our father would give to us in the nineteen fifties. A government that is dedicated first and foremost to the well-being of the people. And improvement in the quality of life of the people. That means selfless leadership. That means incorruptible leadership. That means doing away with the self. With, with me, me, me. And talking only of the welfare of the people. That's how Chief Aula Live. When Chief Aula Wa Gathered, Eh Gomodudu Wa Together in nineteen forty-five. He was only thirty-six years old. When he became premier of the western region in nineteen fifty-one to fifty-two. He was only forty-two, forty-two years old. So it wasn't, it's now our father, yes, but he wasn't a father, he was a boy. And we, we can do better than Chief Aula Wa Today. Because all around us, there is a mass of highly educated people, highly motivated people. That Chief Aula Wa Didn't Have To Draw Upon His Time. So we have the capabilities, but let us now add the moral capability also. The ethical strength that Chief Aula Wa Had Throughout His Life. Let us all dedicate ourselves to a leadership that will work for the benefit of the people only. And that people who will not use the positions they hold in the organizations and their country and so on. Just to benefit themselves. We, there is a whole Nigerian disease. We must cure ourselves of it so we can build the kind of country that the world is waiting for. From the hands of the Yoruba people. I thank you and welcome you. May your meeting, may our meeting go well and may we achieve great success in everything that we lay our hands upon. We are trying to raise money to take, to take the people who want to hold a legend in our land to court. May God provide that we will find such money. We are looking for other kinds of resources. May God lead us to the sources of such resources. Remember, what we have promised is that the struggle for the Yoruba nation shall be a peaceful and law-abiding struggle. I know that we can achieve what we want by such means. And let us be faithful, let us be honest to our people. Let's be honest before our people. I thank you all and welcome you to this meeting. Thank you.
Eh Shie Puko, Alano, Eh, Eh Jaki Apate Wopwe. Of Myi, Atoboma Apelai Kesineo, Ni Mathieu, Yeti Ofi Kowa Dele Jiri, Olodumari, Afijinken Yo. Ah, Eh Gakke Di Waa, Awani Aukesiba, Ani Arroy, Ni Shoki. Awana Oru Kalonro, Wani, Eh, Boya Wati, Niya Wai, Niya Wafi, Coriniba, Katuya, Poppe. Wali, Bolenmi O Wali, Odabi Ekemokba, Orikantwa Konipanyadi. Eh, Wawa Jalan, Wani One Lan, Wow, Ki Bogo Amoyuba Kamabondi, Kawabao. Awani Wali Adenina. Kiatu Wari Adenina Inaga, Oru Kwa Isomana, Ni Tungro Manibel, Wani, Ireketina, Akrodina Ireke. Adetia Wani Odi, Kishy, Adem, Adetoni, Wani Ki Bogo Wata, Anira, Kaparako. Benlu Awa, Kaparukti Awa, Kawasi Inawais, Abali, Udile Idiri. Abellibai Pe, Oru Kwa Imama, Isuma, Ondoma Malara, Wali, Adenina, Ibagke, Alan. O Minerala, Ilay Yoruba, Ah, Baba, Eh Bawa So, Oro Ishiri.
Eh Shie Ali, Eh Kuo, Moki Bogo Me Pe, Olu Ye. Eh Kade, Eh Kuakitiya, Eh Kuakitaju. Eh Ku Aymatale, Ni Na. Chume, Eh Dina Tili, Eh Kanto Nusele, Nuh, Ode, Ah, Uh, Eh, Wani Nuh, Ni Foya. Kekomontekula La, Ki Kolosimachena, Muze Fekse, Chuma Shiper. Eh, Mechi. Baba Wa, Ibagke Di An Baba Wa.
Okay.
Eh, Niyamboli.
Atungta Yiman.
Ah, Eh Babi, Eh, Eh Babi.
Baba Wa, Wali Adenina, Eh Bawa Shifokolo Doi, Shari Devise Ti Baba, Eh Bawa Mute Devise.
Wati Mute, Wati Mute, Wati Mute Ti Baba, Otuwa Okay, Wati Mute Ti Baba. Emma Boronini Show.
Eh Shie, Ah, Moki Atokon. Moki Bogo Megbe, Moki Awolo Ye. Eh, Moni, Mo, Moni Latibori Nifuni. Um, Bogo Akiti Natenche. Latere Pe, Ilay Yoruba Ba Ominera, Corona Nigeria. Te Ba, Si Ber Dasi, Ali So Be, Eh, Eh, Kuma Kanton Lonli. Eh, Bele, Eh, Be Ni Eko, Kade Ama Funi, Ba Ode Jefede Bar. Abi, Temagwe Lushobo, Ke Wuma Bay, Kwe Ba Le Jefede Ilisha. Abi Ke Wani Jepode, Ke Wuke Ba Le Jefede Badon. Kamaiteti Soti, Akure Losia Dukiti, Losi, Eh Kalea Coco. Abi Ondo Losi Ore. I be on the lossy already. Sorry, we, sha- sha- me. Oh, no, to share me, they lay Yoruba lonely. But we for a ballet. But they get pay. Eh, why need be talk on your tibale? Siber, eh, run only. Oh, long, we need bad day. Eh, carry a codeele. Eh, nebe sajo. Eh, I know, new one, so I confirm me. Me, we need to call you later. See, my baby, eh, I won't be lonely, I won't mind, he land on to one bed. When I, I won't put it in me. My last, be on the kilo day. Sorry, only the dream moment, eh, but he don't find it, Daniel, let come, Barry. But I have a moment, you, Ba, you, Morin, Ba, eh. He died, Jim, I know, I mean, eh, eh, I'm Barahy. Ah, ah, eh, ah, consala. He would be. Baba, ni, eh, come to pull up, but no, I saw me, eh. I want to go, Kudo. I follow to ya. I want to one day, come, I would do to la one. So, eh, eh, you, Robert. Sorry, pay, Robert. Eh, eh, my bad, no, long, bad day, new Bobo, no, eh. Uh, Baba, she so pull up, or, or. Sorry, I like, I told you, John, you lie, yeah. You get, eh, I'll pull up, or no, I want, eh, no, wa. That's okay, I want to, yeah, Bara. I were, eh, eh, come on, you want, oh. Beyond she Maru, who could drop? Most of Maru were Ali. Uh, eh, go. There, Ba, more, I want, eh. Eh, Ba, wa, eh, Ba, wa, ro, wa. Sorry.
Uh, Baba. Eh, that, eh, I want, oh, my, eh, two one, be, one, eh, I want, going, da, da. Not a bit, eh, who want to, eh, who, eh, can you, eh, who, eh.
Uh, I get you, she, she, oh, me, you're done, sir.
I'm getting, eh, I'll be, eh, cool. I then, it's too bad, look, we have the two devices, you know, eh, that, my job, would you stop, eh? Would you stop, sir? Would you stop, sir, eh, would you stop?
Okay.
Would you stop?
Okay.
Benny. Money, it's a, Ba, money, Kenny. Don't look, eh, you, Jambara, eh. Eh, can't he, yeah, she did, oh, no, oh, me. Eh, so, so, eh, can you, eh, oh, eh. He sent to Ba, Pa, you know, eh. We, I'm a, so, eh, eh, oh, wait, eh, no, no. Sherry. Oh, pull up, I'm, eh, I want, eh, I want, eh, I want, eh, eh, eh. So, Tabas, okay, I'm cool, eh. Do look, oh, eh, Latin, eh, oh, eh.
Olu Shola Oni Ba Shigun, Latu Ilu United Kingdom. Ya wata olida giyeli Latu Ilu Americani bini. Eni ketani adekule ade lakun e wobodu. Urukola adekule ade lakun e wobodu. Latu odo ya wa lijadu. Ijirala shukun edo balaja uligi. Aditeki onilekale eduma bariki lokuluku. Muni wilo jurobo iti gururu ju yane. Alaba wibi eduma bariki. Okambabi eji tomewa. Seni ma chikimba ma ba yileni abikimba nudi. Hmm. Oh woliya makisa uchi soni.
Yeah.
Iya wa. Ijadu e kabo ebawa kama wa la leu.
Eh moki bo bo le o shebomi.
Kete kete ba ilan boi.
Eh. Eh boi.
Aboye.
Moki bo bo le moki ya o baba mi mejeji. Eh baba mi bandi ati eh baba mi wale mi fe laslim si because. Mi fe fagou. Mombor asu lo do ilale yo. Eh baba mi toku. Ati eh ya mi te wa nde moki bo bo yi. Akoko fe dupe la wa lo no baile du mari. Atire re kari ayee. Eh ba ino la she she omiri a tamisile. Tori weke oni she she la wa. Agbaro lo no ba la ba ra ele du mari. Opewa. Ato adekun like pe la ijinoi.
Asher. Asher.
Enu midu. Tati ba e joku si uli e padei. Kilofa. Otipé. Odubogoro odju ogon odula. Si emi taiwu ijadu ati bejimi. Osho jamini si. Akani de mojuba e o. Oti do sho jamin. Eh otidju ogon odula tati sopé akishi Nigerians more. Atoku olé lati gen Nigerians more lati no kowa. Nitorri i baje iwa i baje. Ambalawa wa balabawa. Ati loa wa odua wa. Ni pa se. Awa alage wey. Awa alage yo. Wodja bo bo to wa ni odju ta yeton. Ontu dja ita fisino akuro. Hmm. Dati egito wa lo ri pe peton ontu dja tinu akuro. Nitoria no she sopé e jo lo dja owo josi. Oya wani ekute lo be mi. Wale ju. Aona de ni ekute. Ora yo de bere la toliya wata wa mo. Kuda tan tan da ba from fifty thirty borotia wa mba waso. Iya to diwa lo mo. Ejo. Obé di fu ya wa o.
Kabisi.
Obé di fu. Obini o. Yani baba no de tuni. Ulu oda wa toni. Odju medji nubimo. Odju ayoyo konshushu. Le tomo. Odé fi. Ami konsile fua. Taban tine kokomba she taba fe maso kope. Ah ribawa ah sheki lubaba oni wa ni ke e pa imo. Ose toko ipé lulu baba oni. Baba ini. Eh bo doso konti oda ni pa. Ele iwa fu wa ni ayi latimo tani ya wa. Lo dja ilue yo unu lo dja. Ilue yo uni abawa je. Ya no joku ni po ya biolo tishi fe ku joku. Noro politics ya wa lo dja can interest in no politics. Noro be. Pony omo emo oyé ilosiwa ju ati ituni sile. Kenyo dja ra eh. Kode ma fi orishi orishi owe. Sorofua. She brought us up by example. Bo bo tajaleni ya wa ni. Emasi mi go ala woyami. Koda ala woyami tepe. Wodja omo mo fuwa shugon ya no je fuwa. Ade la woba ba to dja ike. Woda bagon onto ya wabi. Ata motape abingo lo mo. Ori biti mo joku pe lu yi. Ashe she wa bere si motala jeni. Nitorri anja jangbara koto okon. Ijangbara kilaja. She lori oguni. She lori owo ni. Ah jangbara lori bo bo oye. Ori ile. To dja ile. Awa baba la ati ya la wa ni. Konche just ile to dja liya woba bawa o. Turi ashita ashiso oroni kama borosope. Awa baba baba wa awa ya to bi awa baba wa oko onsi ni. Ino tu ino si. Niko dogba lo longo da. Okoni ato dili ni. Ori inkota angasi no ile ni. Te bak boton so wepe. Ya mi ile o gelya foko ye ye ri. Ari lori ile ni. Ah she tile. Olo wa dja ki ile ko be wa.
Asher.
Amin. Amin. Iya wa. Iya wa.
Baba wa.
I. Alba. Iya wa ni dena ben. Bi orotain soi. Awa mayo ban tati big ba ti anoma ke kele ni a ati bi ati di. P A R P G B. Eh wa she kaka fuwa. Cherry ibere moro ni timo bere lo wo yi. Shuban mofeki efi eh wan kasebe. Ke rama fi refu. Nitorri pe atun padabo lo do ifun wa ibere ke ke ke. Emma bawa mura le. Eh odju odju yi e gure. Kaka jangbara yi. Ni ni kanta inu. De pi yongizi eh kobobo mayo balonyo ambe.
Onja wa ni. Onja wa atashawa.
Kabisi oló du mari hmm eh bo eh kole eh yoma yoba. Iba niya dja ka te baba wa hmm. Mu kama na mu mu introduce alamo ni bolonko. Doctor Olu Shola Oni Ba Shigun. Ah oui di ke 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 no de ta vinda ba shigun wa nyambe lo wa mwani enye ni su. Ije tori pe baba ti nu banavinda ba shigun. Ashala ye ni. Ababa wado tola oni ba shigun. Oya ekawa la le. La ina ki baba wa ade lakun ade olak ade lakun. E wobodu kama mura le. Ashi.
Wow ti mucho wow. Yes.
Oya eh last mokono milchi. Baba wa mo bo liwo isha wa lo yi. Asha.
Okay. Want you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Asha go thank you very much. It is interesting to see eh Taiwu Lijadu. Eh the last time I saw her must have been about nineteen seventy, I think.
Nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy. When I was a medical student. I was a medical student at U I.
Long long baba mi.
That was it. That was the last time I saw you. That was the last time I saw you. I mean, of course, you wouldn't recognize me. It's been a long time. In fact, I think the last time I saw you must have been. Eh there's a club across the way from Premier Hotel New K. Opposite Premier Hotel. But you don't look up and see. That's an art art studio.
Mo Motiroti biteson ye.
Eh it's an art studio. It's a long, long time ago. When we were both. Where we were both young.
Nineteen seventy.
Yes. You 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 mommy of fufumba eh. Eh eh I it's it's it was interesting to listen to you because I can tell you I was a bit surprised. Eh at your erudition. Kono pekini asha eh your 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 command of Yoruba, which is a lot better than mine, I'm afraid.
Ashi baba.
Um. Th- th- this is a very serious matter that we are dealing with. Eh our our land now, I I happen to be listening to a program. Eh I was disappointed afterwards. Tori be. Everything was pessimistic.
Hmm.
You. Everything that was being said was pessimistic. And I'm asking myself, T. If the Yoruba elites, the people we call our elites, are this pessimistic. Can I affect here one? Me konu she. If if you that you are supposed to be leading the way, you are so pessimistic. Eh they were talking about, you know, what are we going to do? Eh there's no plan B. There's this, there's this sort of thing. And I'm asking myself. If you are going to climb Everest, when you look at it, it's very daunting. But you take it step by step. You take it step by step. You you know, it's there, it's daunting, and you can see it, you can ask yourself. Idja oni ma gukini. But you start step by step. And without. If we don't give our people enthusiasm. If we don't give our people hope. Then we might as well give up. I mean, the whole purpose of being an elite, the whole purpose of your society spending resources on you. Is to be able to give them hope. Is to be able to give them something to cling on to. Ah kalima, you know, we can't as 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 elites, can't on duko be kanio. There is no hope, there is nothing to do. Eh I I I I it's not something that 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 I eh that I fathom. I mean, briefly, eh I am new at this, I have to confess. Eh I'm very new at this. Eh I usually tell people that eh I mean, I I I do a lot of writing, which is a conversation between within yourself. You're talking to yourself. And and it is eh. It it was doing all this that I became, you know, involved in all this. And I only become became the leader of Illana in the UK just two months ago. So I am still learning. And eh I want to thank Kato Songoka, I want to thank eh the people in Atlanta, USA and Atlanta, Canada. Because they have been of tremendous help. When everything looked dark and difficult eh giving me help. Eh and they are still giving me help and I and I'm very grateful to you eh. I am I am a surgeon by trade. I'm an orthopedic surgeon. Eh I I also have qualification in law. Eh and eh I have been a judicial official in the UK. Eh but my my eh passion, eh um um I'm a Yoruba traditionalist. Eh I'm a Yoruba nationalist. I have written two books eh on on, if you like, Yoruba tradition or whatever you want to call it. One on ancient, the practice of medicine in ancient times, and the other one on the practice of law in ancient times. And I hope. One of the things that I hope is that when we get Yoruba nation, the sort of eh legal practice that our forefathers did. That has been eh denigrated into eh called customary law. Will be the basis of our law. Yoruba law is as good as the law of anybody on this planet. And I hope eh that when we eh get our own country. Eh you know, we'll be able to eh go back to the way it was, think about what we used to do. How our forefathers used to do things, how they governed themselves, how the the law that they practiced. I would say I would say more than that eh because I understand there are questions coming. Eh but thank you very much for inviting me and it's nice to see an old face again. Well, I shouldn't say old face.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You have put a a a pleasure of two smile on my lips, my face. Because it is me at the beginning. That's in that's in bold as well.
You are. I know. I know.
When when. Past research on who we are. Eh I need to go out and come back. Tabawa kini ma wabani so many. Thank you, Baba. I kabo.
It's nice seeing you again.
I kabo.
Adupé ane pekwa kuno wa. Hmm. Enati bo bo ye nyawa mofé dja ke ma kini kada daluni. Ta ba wonti onshele inti mo riye oriyo. Yo ba kude de de. O kumpen wa mo lo ye. Ati amweni ti olo nubeka le. Iruwa Iruwa woba ba wa yamwe yamwe ina fada di orisha. Eni ti orisha to da. Opalo opoku ma wani orisha wani obori sha ngati oyo. Merakpele temi moya ni temi. Baba wa chiwa bawa sorota ye ba shigun. Awa ni konneto illana lawa lawa tutumye nyara. Ta opalo kongbe lo mepe opoku ni baba inda situ mbe fin glitter. Eh pimile ye tu. Asha shiri efuni edema sawo chofer eh. Baba wa prince ade lakun e wobodu. Awa ni. Illana. Ah secretary general akowia ba akowi bo bo fu illana. Lapako. Eh awa ni mo kedi timo bawa ferawa mbai. La ina ma died wey fada si odo onu kumi baba mo bo liwo eh mu tumu itu. Abawa. Ebawa kiamwa la le. Abawa wobodu. Ekaleo.
Ah. Yes.
Ekaleo. Onala o.
Beregede.
Onala o.
Beregede.
Na o. Onala fu ile Yoruba. Onala fu bo bo ma lanu. Onala fu bo bo ma Yoruba.
Asher.
Niti li niti ku. Ubo ije wa ni North America onala fu new. Ubo yi ya wa onala fu new.
Eh I say I mean.
Eh first of all. I glorify his name. The almighty God. For his mercy. On every one of us. And. Our able leader. The Alana. Omudua. Professor Banji Akito Yi. I glorify his your name. The almighty God. For being with us. All these ones. And for giving me the rare opportunity. And privilege. To serve. As General Secretary of Illano Mudua. Mudukala oi. And Illano Mudua. As eh 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 as a foremost. Organization. On self termination of Yoruba. Land. Which I deeply subscribe to. And I believe. In the tenet and the principle. Of our leader. Our great leader. Professor Banji Akito Yi. I want to seize this opportunity as well. Let congratulate wubu omo Illano. Illano Mudua. Worldwide. Uh the. Executive Council. All the chapter coordinators. Mudukala oi. Ode kibogo akuryi. Ati she uleni da Yoruba. Ati she uleni da Yoruba. Itori pe kene kon. Olo di koi shea wolo di olo di o o nero. Olo koi shea wunero. Olo wa bo lo di di. Mofiki bo wa akuryi. We have to learn. We must learn from the mistakes of the past. And we must appreciate God. For giving us the opportunity. And the privilege. To have Professor Banji Akito Yi. As our leader. Opwe ni fu olo. Eh. I always be very, very careful in my life. Because. One near the Yoruba man so wepe. And ito ban new kokuto fiukikun. We must carefully. Select and choose our friends. It's our own choice to choose our own friends. And when we choose the wrong ones. Then. We will be the one to be blamed. Nobody can blame any other person. Because we are the architect of our own lives. And the way you plan it. The way you. Want it. And that is exactly. The way you're gonna have it. So adupé your olo. People are goddess with us. And I have to tell you. Pepe. Omo Yoruba. Ah go to shudu. Ah de go to beru. We must learn. From the mistakes of the past mushiso. We must learn from the mistakes of our akoshi. And we must pull ourselves together. For a common interest. For a common purpose. For a great achievement. For a great nation of Yoruba. We must pull our pull ourselves together. Because we do not have any choice. We do not have any choice. Like Jeremy Betton said. He said. When you you do not have any choice. Than to have a choice. We must have a choice. And what is our own choice? Our choice is not Yoruba, it's not Nigeria. Because we don't belong to Nigeria. Our choice is Yoruba nation. And that's where we belong to. And that's what we have. And that's what that's who we have. We must work together. We must work together. We have to work together. We must be very careful to identify. Those that are destroying the Yoruba nation. Those that are destroying our leaders. Those are against us. We must be very, very careful. This is the time. We do not have another time. Than this moment. We don't have another time than this period. We don't have another time than this time. This is the time all the Yoruba nation. All the Yoruba sons and daughters must wake up. We must rise up. Because we must not fail. We do not have any choice. We must not fail. I say it once again, we must not fail. I am happy. This is my, this is one of my happiest moments in life. That I can see Yoruba people gather together. Under one umbrella. Have a common purpose. Come with a unity. A unity of purpose. Coniction. Decision. Principle. Philosophy. Under one umbrella. Under our able leader, Professor Banji Akito Yi. I give thanks to God. Ode dupe la do la. God will continue to guide us. God will give us necessary wisdom. And we will get there. I see the vision. And I saw it. In nineteen ninety seven. Seo don F said it. When he said. There must be a Jewish nation. And even among the Jews. They were laughing. They were mocking him. They say it's not possible. Because of what? Because if it was one one bay hotel olo. Because they were excited. They were living in America. They were living in Europe. They were living all over the world. They have the sense of belonging. And they never asked why straight. But when Seo don F. In nineteen ninety seven now said no. He had a meeting, he called a meeting. Embarrassed so to land in nineteen ninety seven. And he said that gonna be a nation. A nation of Israel. A Jewish state. Where every Jewish will be proud of. People are mocking him. One land really, one called possible. But after fifty years, there was a nation. And there's a nation called Israel. Glory be to God. And I say this today. That by the grace of God. By his power, there's going to be a Yoruba nation. Whether they like it or not, we must have a Yoruba nation. We don't have to beg them because God has already already destined us to have a Yoruba nation. We're gonna have a Yoruba nation. And we must be ready. They cannot subdue us. They cannot push up, put us down. They don't have that power. It is a God promise. God has promised our ancestors. God has promised our fathers. And I give God father. That no matter what, there must be a Yoruba nation. And we have to adore him. Because he's the powerful God. He's he's a good God. And he will continue to do with us. Bo bo eh Yoruba. Bo bo wa kaba dja Yoruba. Eh doni tori ono mofé beyi. Ta ba fe kache Carlos Wadu. Ta ba re fe kade shashi ori. Eh bi otte skurube.
Asher.
Eh bi otte skurube. Yoruba nation is not a nation. It's not a business in a platform. It's not a platform to drop people. It's not a platform to treat people. It's not a platform to cycle money. It's a platform for a realistic Yoruba nation. It's a platform. That eh the communist generation will be proud of. Ni agbaro lo. Odjo de itiwa. Omo to ma e kache. Eh dja kache. Eh ita wa America, don't be tired. Amaya koreyi. Ni agbaro lo.
Eh adupé sa.
Oma ya wala no.
Only you.
Olo roma power ne eh ne yo. Olo roma be ne yo asila Yoruba. We know how it is. We know how it is. We are tired of we are tired of suffering. We are tired of corruption. We are tired of manipulation. We are tired of the true criminals. All the satisfied criminals. All the satisfied groups among Yorubas. They will go down the drain.
And me la she le du mari. Ashi gana bawa.
Olo di koi tiwa. Because you know them.
Ah orade go mori mori bo she kainlara bo she kainlara. Eh da pe eh da mofé mofé ke mumi na mofé ke mumi. Mofé ke mumi. Eh ilu la ilu la ba mi leko. Mofé ke mumi sheti we kare. Eh tu sa. Oripé okainlara. Cherry be she wa ni lokaku eh. Ki Yoruba ne shakuwa si mo she. Last your long yo wa si mo she. Asher. To.
Asher.
Yoruba.
Asher.
Ya ba de de she. Wa ni si she ba eh onani ashé. Lo ni eh ati bere. Ariya wa ti bere oti bayare. Kila wa kati. Oya kamujuto ba eh onani bere. Tori pe tu wa kani pe ki ni ni bo kaka. Oni kati wa. Kisi ni ti assisi. Chofi majuto. Ni ba eh alosi oli question ati answer ni ba tiya wa lidweli. Anekwa fara anesima wa so wa wa she po she to. Olo ri yora wa lowele. Komale Yoruba pata onani kini protein kala ra. Ni ba kama la si odo. Iya wa. Awa ni ma kopi liri tiya ra isoku. Awa ni ma kopi liri bere ti owa ni wa ju ba eh. Mama. Ibere ti owa ta to to dje. Wani be. Ki ni. Iriyi. Mi oju ogun. Ki ni eh le ru be. Elise. Tiya fili ba o minerali Yoruba. Tori be lati mama wa. Se biya wa ni ijadu. Siwa wambe. Ijadu shoa pe duwa. Eh da ke ba no wa wa ke ba mi omo tuwa. And that, I'm gonna want, I'm gonna, I'm, much want. In fact, one down, very, it, one, Larry.
I see your music. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm.
Same one.
Can go me.
Bye me.
Life.
It really need that, he, I lost you, you go. Only we pay. Koto, the pay, I bang, oh, Lord. Eh, Governor, Ruti, me. You want, check, you what? Nineteen sixty nine, eh. Eh, early nineteen sixty nine. I want, oh, you, you see one. Abayeni, eh, I bro me. A castle, where the cabo, I need, eh, go. Eh, she, take, you, I see, oh, don't, you, can see, oh, Bill. Only, she, la, I'm fake, eh, illegal, the sisters, can, oh, so, you, go, loco, and yeah. Kilode. Who sell, oh, mini, lumoni. Oh, Bill, I'm, I, what? She, but, oh, come, it, oh, come, eh, what? Ah, 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 mom. Immediately, no, not, so, please, as a matter of fact. I want, please, it, to, we, I'm, fair, conscript, eh. He, the, Jiminy, eh, go. Change, she, eh. I was, yeah, to, I like, eh, eh, money, what, back, who, more, coin, eh? Only, eh, file. Only, as a matter of fact, that is, eh, low. Boo boo, eh, read, thirteen, she, boo boo, she, thirteen, she, boo boo, recording, see, I want, I'm, eh, low, eh. Royalties, eh, low, eh, everything about you. Indeed. Only, eh, go. Monet, change, she, eh, eh. Ah, ah. Baba, eh, she, be a fan, oh, boy, I was, yeah, too, back, oh, eh, file. Why didn't in the first place? Oh, Bill, eh, la, oh. I want, he, dead, he, she, I want, can, it, oh, what? Kilofun, eh, eh, who, eh, eh, call it, eh, I want, that, oh, eh, I want, that, oh, do, I want, see, be, do, I want, so. Eh, but, she, oh, oh, eh, oh, oh, no, you see, no. Eh, she, eh, yeah, oh, you, the, only, I want, oh, I want, you, the, only, only, oh, two, coin, eh, eh, only, coin, eh, only, time, oh, can, eh, the, only, only, I bro, me, what? It was, you, cause, eh, be. No, yes, eh, maybe, eh, KJ, time, oh, it was, you, cause, eh, be. Only, motive, oh, I, eh, lady, eh. Only, come, eh, eh, your God, of fear, what, by, the, eh, logic, oh, see, eh, me, totally, eh, cause, eh, totally, eh, be, who, eh. Ah, la, no, so, eh, Yoruba nation, today. Yoruba nation, oh, today, eh, see. The birth of Yoruba nation has been recorded. Need, you're totally, eh. Need, Jack, Bara. The death of Yoruba nation shall never be recorded. That, by, alone. Anyway, Abayen, so, for, I, we, eh, I want, I'm, fair, Carlos, you, you, eh. Kalotu, I want, eh, want, eh, she, she, no, to, oh, to, the, da, padasile. Eh, no, to, oh, go, eh. Oh, call, oh, oh, eh, you, oh, so, eh, be, no, oh, so, do, ke, eh, no. Ah, when you're, they, fair, oh, eh, they, ba, lo, they, lo, call, eh, for, eh, in, oh, eh, do. There, eh, la, lo. He, the, Jimmy, eh, eh, on, like, he, say, contract, eh, eh. So, yeah, co, co, cause, eh, you, eh, she, eh, to, no, eh, she, she, go me.
Eh, you.
Cause, eh, you, eh, to, eh, eh, la, pa. Eh, oh, God, oh, no, what, she, I, be, that, eh, you, no, what, she, eh, oh, really, eh, see, eh, one, be, you, oh, Bill, eh, eh, one, be, eh, oh, I, for, let, eh. He, she, I, oh, la, oh, I, she. Eh, Joe, ah, eh, you're, eh, ban, eh, eh, you're, eh, ban, eh, eh, eh. Ah, oh, need, eh, eh, still eh. Eh, quote, oh, you, eh, you, eh, you, eh, go, go, she, eh, go, she, eh, la, so, eh, la, so. Eh, my, I, yeah, long, boom, eh, eh, yeah, oh, my, eh, eh, abandon, see, eh. She, oh, the, dro, eh, my, oh, oh, so, eh, la, she, my, so, eh. What, you, cause, eh? Oh, go, eh, John, eh.
I mean, oh.
Oh, go, eh, John, eh, eh, along, I, 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 she, go, eh.
Same one.
He, she, eh, eh, eh. She, eh, eh, eh. Oh, balad, eh, eh. Eh, it, oh, la, oh, you, eh, la, she, eh, eh, eh. Oh, they, eh, 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 eh. Ah, oh, they, eh, 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 active, Sunday, Adeni, Adi, eh, eh. Eh, this, eh, eh, oh, sha, oh, oh, Baba, damn eh. So, did they pay, eh, 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 eh. Eh, what, oh, look, eh. Sunday. Oh, eh, see, me, me, Sunday. Adi, eh, Tony, eh, 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 Yoruba. Adi, eh, 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 eh. Oh, the, eh, eh, eh. Mm, thank, Sonny, we, eh, that, by, alone, that, by, eh, lady, mari. Ah, oh, need, eh, eh, eh.
So, uh, I'm sure Emma Morasileo, uh, in Iberi, to come for Lord or to back into Berry, Berry, you morning, he did what I can let you show. Bobo, I will, your T O, I'll only connect you. T L T, there are more, eh, be, Ilano, the U S, tabi, Canada. Uh, I don't, he can't, I don't know, oh, my God, wow. Uh, can it, I want you, yeah, no, I did, yeah, what, because it's very good. Ah, they dash it, and when they come, like, yeah, baby, come by the, co- 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 the lonely, for the, for the, the mother, da, da. But when it's here, Bamo, about a sophomore. Uh, T, about, for, there are more, Ilano, the U S A. And Lucy, or you, uh, you're, uh, you're, uh, you're, uh, et W W W dot Ilano. Oh, my, oh, do, do, uh, U S A, get, get, you're, oh, oh. Dot O R G, T, I will, yeah, when he, oh. Again, we let us you, W W W dot Ilano. Oh, my, oh, do, do, uh, U S A, dot O R G. T, about, in Lucy, but, I, yeah, I, for you, that, it, there are, oh, wow. T, yeah, but especially, you know, somebody, they call me, me, a fellow, and you have been. And you have been two, one, two. And you have been two, oh, two. Two, one, zero, three, two, five, one. T, you, but, yeah, please, learn, you, the, America, level, thirty, thirty, eh, Coco, Daya, plus, and the plus, one, two, oh, two. Two, one, zero, three, two, five, one. T, about, it's, yeah, and you have, you, um, see, let, uh, so, look, I, if the telephone number, you see, let. He, we, he, color, our, yeah, key, I don't, I can see. T, yeah, but, see, was, see, but, they, what, you, you, Sunday, lunch, but, they, me, I go, my, fire, let.
I don't know what you mean. I don't know. 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 UK. I don't know. I don't know. But. I don't know. That's UK. He got it. The American. UK. Uh, uh, David. And that. Oh, my. It is. It's a. That. Only. It's a. Roy. You can. Only. H. T T D S. Colon. Slash. Slash. Ilana. UK. Dot. Org. He equilay. Oh, go. So. To go. The UK. About. Yeah. Oh, my. You. But. What the UK. One day. One hundred and twenty thousand. Till about. Yeah. Twenty thousand. Pretty little. Little. They. They. On. Yes. Well. About. La. Maso. And we. Are. Uh. Oh, my. Let's. Well. Do. When. The American. Be. What? Sure. What? Sure. You. What? Look. He. I want. I want. He. Uh. In London. That. Be. The American. He. About. She. Again. Oh, go. Am. I love. Again. Be. Be. Uh. Yeah. But. Uh. He could. Me. I. Hope. Bad. And he. Oh. So. Bye. Very. Keta. The. Late. Los. So. The. Baba. Wa. Eh. Go. On. He. About. The one.
Hello. Yeah. I'm going. By.
I think. Going.
Actually. About. Eh. More. I love. You. Be. Eh. Only. Can. I. See. I. To. See. Kiki. Kani. Actually. I do. Eh. Baba. I'm. My. She. Like. What?
I see.
You. That. United. Demilit. Yeah. My. Father. Who. I. Wish. You. Only. Like. You. Like.
I see.
Eh. What? You. Hello. Baba. Bash. I. She. My. Was. I. But. I love. You. Do. You. You. My. Boy. You. Like. You. Ah. You. Ah. What? You. My. Talk. Oh. Sure. Losi. Although. Baba. Eh. Oh. But. My. Fair. Oh. Yeah. Da. And. Ba. Fair. You. Do. Me. Oh. Better. It. Be. Really. He. Baby. He. And. Oh. Bye. He. He. Baby. Me. Only. She. My. Baby. They. Be. You. Love. She. Is. I. Want. You. Want. In. Lisa. She. Want. Baby. Oh. What? Do. Okay. She. My. Fame. You. See. Baba. Wa. Baby. You. Be. I. Want. You. Want. They. Kakakiri. At. Baby. Lo. I. Want. Kine. Can. Liberation. That. You. It. I. Do. It. I. Do. See. Kila. Cherry. Oh. Yes. At. We. Oh. Now. Who. Like. Big. I. My. Feel. Life. Break. I. Kine. I. Man. Gagabi. Oh. But. But. I. Tell. You. Like. If. I. Li. Li. Bali. Li. Come. I. Tell. But. Oh. Not. Yeah. Big. Bali. Bush. Yeah. Cast. Really. Yeah. My. Play. Oh. Look. Liberation. See. Because. I. Oh. Look. Liberation. Sweet. Yeah. Yo. But. Oh. But. You. You. Yeah. Oh. Look. For. The. We. We. Bad. But. If. So. For. Yes. Of. Me. Making. Bad. You. Making. Ban. I. Making. What? Oh. Check. Oh. Oh. My. Yours. Mini. At. Baby. Lo. Actually. I do. I. Want. Baby. For. You. She. Ba. I. Co. Co. Be. Say. You. Me. Look. Yeah. Come. Me. Can. I.
Um. I. Say. Baba. I. Hope. Uh. I. Should. Never. I. Baby. I. Um. All. Long. All. Oh. For. You. You. Oh. For. You. You. For. You. Oh. Oh. At. You. Know. Oh. Wow. Oh. Feliz. Open. Nigeria. Wish. Me. See. Wish. Eh. Yeah. You. For. You. Nigeria. Eh. You. You. Mas. Oh. Baby. Coto. You. You. Mas. Oh. Baby. Coto. Say. The. Oh. Only. Two. Tell. Me.
Bad. Is. I.
I. Boy. Okay. I. Boy. And. Okay. Eh. Ni. A. Coco. Eh. If. It. One. Is. They. Know. You. At. You. What? You. I. Do. This. We. Are. Not. Here. By. 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 Mistake. Or. By. But. It. Has. Been. Destined. Although. They. Although. You. Fee. In. Your. Res. I. Just. Was. Okay. For. You. But. Really. Fair. You. You. To. Me. Oh. No. Yeah. Do. You. To. You. Be. Do. Do. You. Who. They. Do. Do. You. She. I. Declare. Your. Ban. Nation. Oh. The. Republic. It. But. The. Joy. I. Want. American. I. Want. Be. Can. Moloch. I. Be. Although. I'm. Be. He. 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 I. Julia. Unique. Push. Mary. Or. Turn. Into. One. She. Why? In. Party. Baby. Eh. Oh. Go. Call. You. Barry. Who. They. See. Oh. Go. Can. To. Bo. To. My. Bury. Our. Man. You. You. Like. By. Alone. Mama. One. Sorry. But. Sorry. I. Wa. Ta. Who. Did. You. Oh. But. Oh. You. Go. Look. For. But. They. They. Go. Look. For. Oh. She. Play. I. Want. I. Will. I. Let. Me. Did. I. I. Let. So. Me. Do. Go. Oh. Do. Oh. But. Oh. Come. Tell. Me. Eh. Oh. For. I'm. Fair. Then. You. Sure. Like. Tell. Me. About. Oh. For. I'm. Fair. Oh. Time. For. The. Oh. It. Oh. Like. Of. You. Put. Then. Affair. Your. Ban. Nation. She. Why? I. Just. Kind. Of. You. Do. Can. Be. More. Oh. But. I. They. Oh. But. I. Oh. But. I. Oh. She. Go. And. I. Maybe. I. Do. Bye. I. Want. You. Know. Can. Be. We. Are. Almost. Where. I. Want.[474.08]
Me ba she go, eh ma mora sile baba. Eh n'oum feb iliree, beree. To ripwe enya ba. Eh ni, m'ama de ban de kini bo. Eh ni ya ba la ba, you ma di ti, iki o, ti o, si. O feb bi, baba. O je, ona ba yo wa. Si, your ba fili, kadu ro. Life si we be bo ya, agago. Ti si u buja ra, shiona pa yo wa. Ti a fili, barawa kuru. Lo wa, awa moni se ye. Life si we be afiti u gushé. Nisuki baba, e she bu bo. Eh ya me, oh oké, what? Eh ya ke, omutensa. Eh ya omutsa.
Okay. Eh, mo du kalo on you, thank you very much. Eh. There are two important things that, eh, to ekaso, katet, ubere. Ba ulachima, ba, eh, uminira. La ya, si wo, la ya, la ya. The first to ekamone pe, the Northerners are not interested in a negotiated settlement. And the reason is simple, one more ipe. She ma kimo so alia ipe, the whole of Nigeria was set up to rob Peter to pay Paul. If you are a parasite, you don't want your host to be liberated. You don't want to leave your host. Because think about it. Ti ya wa your ba ba kuru ni na Nigeria, kilo ku. The place is finished. So. Our Northerners, they don't want to have a negotiated settlement. One way, because they are so used to talking to, eh, the so-called, eh, what I call them, military gestated politicians. They think that that is all there is to the Yoruba people. And also, they are not likely to accept referendum either. To repeat, referendum, they can predict their outcome. Waita ambasi referendum, gubwama aloni. The, the second point that I want to make before I go on is this, that international community are not interested in, they are not yet interested in Nigeria's problems. They may be interested when Nigeria implodes. Ba ripwe wa ala ti dele. When refugees from Nigeria start flooding everywhere, maybe they might be interested. But it is our job, those of us who are, who are supposed to be elites, it is our job to convince the international community that there is problem in Nigeria. And therefore, we have to find other means. We are not going to go to war, there is no political solution, international solution is not there. And therefore, we have to find a different, eh, mode of attacking the problem. And I come to it from a legal point of view. Nigeria is a legal entity. That legally, as of 2022 Tawaya, Nigeria's legality is defined by two legal instruments. Number one, the proclamation of Amaga mission on, on 1st January 1914 by Lord Nigeria. That's the first legal instrument that says Nigeria is legal. The second one is the promulgation of a constitution on May, on the 5th of May 1999 by Abdul Salami. And the thing is this, if one or both of those legal instruments could be shown to be fraudulent, then Nigeria does not have a legal existence as a country. That's the importance of going to court. That if you can go to court to demonstrate that Nigeria's 1999 constitution is fraudulent, is fraudulent, then Nigeria does not have a legal basis at all to exist. Now, as, eh, as Alan said earlier, there's a general declaration that the Nigerian, eh, the 1999 constitution is a fraud. But that declaration is not enough. I mean, various people have said, eh, the place is fraudulent. But that's not enough. The matter must be settled in a court of law. The courts are there to settle questions of legality. Eh, so people have been arguing, eh, 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 the constitution set up the courts and therefore, the courts existed before, before the constitution. The laws that were there before the constitution. All that the constitution did was to arrange the court into tiers, into this, that. The courts were there before. And if the courts have the power to interpret individual clauses of the, eh, of the constitution, they also have the power to determine the legality of the entire document. So if somebody says, eh, eh, constitution cannot be dealt with by the court, that's just nonsense. What Elana is doing is going to court to stop the 2022 gubernatorial elections in Ekiti and Ocean States. But what is, what is, what is clever about it is this, that the case is being brought by individual voters. People think that it is Elana that is bringing the, the, the case. No, the case is being brought by individual voters. What Elana is doing is to provide them with the resources to go to court. And the reason why we selected individual voters is this, because they have standing, what, what they call local standing in court. Because their right to vote will be adversely affected or infringed if the 2022 election were permitted to be held under the 1999 constitution that everybody says is fraudulent. You can't have an election under a fraudulent constitution. It infringes on the fundamental human rights of the voters. What Elana is doing, Elana is merely providing, eh, legal representation for this voter. Because as individuals, one, low term, in the lawsuit court, that's what Elana is doing. And this is where it is important for everybody. This is a public interest litigation. It's a public, it affects all of us. So this is not just, eh, where Elana, eh, 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 eh. This is a public interest litigation, it affects all of us. Because election is something that all of us, affects all of us. We all have an interest in it. And therefore, others need to support the litigation by these Ekiti and Ocean voters by not donating to the cause, because they will be doing exactly what Elana is doing. Elana is not the one going to court, is the, is the voters that are going to court to say that their individual voting rights have been infringed. What Elana is doing is supporting those voters. And therefore, everybody else, any individuals, eh, organizations can themselves contribute. And I don't know who was referring to. There are several million Yorubans in the, in the diaspora and upwards of 120,000 in, in London alone. And as somebody said, if 20,000 of them were to donate £5 each or the equivalent of US $10, $10 each, that's the job done. That's it, we've, we've, we've paid, we've paid for the, for, for, for the lawyer. As Elana would say, there are, what, over 200 Yorubans have determination organizations? For example, if each one of them donated £500 or more, that's the job done again. What is important, the reason why I'm suggesting that, you know, we should have a large pool from which we get the money, is because it reduces the burden on individuals, it spreads the burden. I mean, as an example, even in this country, the Labour Party, to join the Labour Party is less than £5. Because if you want to make yourself a mass movement, you don't, you don't need to charge a lot of money, because the more people that join us, the less the burden on individual. I, I want you, Rabano Loni, pay many hands, put load on the head. And that's, that's really, so, so it is possible, it is possible that we exit Nigeria without going to war. And the possibility is going through the law courts. Don't forget. Hebo went to court and has won, Kanu went to court and has won. Eh, some people went to court on, eh, about the Twitter ban and the one in court. So the idea that, oh, it is not possible to win in court in Nigeria is nonsensical. And let me tell you something, this is a very tricky case for Nigeria itself. Because remember what I said, the case is being brought by individual voters who are saying that their fundamental right to a vote is being infringed if you set up an election under a fraudulent constitution. I will leave it there because, eh, you know, there are going to be questions and, and, eh, you know, they are available to answer them. Thank you very much.
Ekanisa. Baba rokore. Alma testewaju, dino, eh, etowa. Odo, iyawa lida du, oni, asingbe, oro obobai. Iberi ti, au be ni ba, ayitie, enawa soké, arin yo. La yitie, awa alé jo, ameté tabati, daun, awa be re ti, ati ne konoto. Ni, awa aké, ti, ewo be re, awa be re. Shubamba ya diaki alosi odo, iyawa, lida du. Eh. Mama wa, iberi medji, ni muma kapo fony ti, ama daun fo, ane shoki shoki. Eh ya ba, leso pe, o wula ba mi. Kamagide. O wula ba mi, kamagileke. Ati de, ati leke, kose iti ban i, desa o. Ashonika, ne ban i, do. Hmm, hmm. Luri, oro, eh ya ba yi, ni mofeki, ekbe, on ti, ama bawa sopai, eduri. Ti, ilé yoruba, ba, tro si biti yo wa yi. Ni, odumma, ro, oni, ti o si, o minira. Ni, odumba, wa, oni, ti o si, o minira. Keni, e, on ti, e, leru, be, yo, chele, si, na yoruba. Iyé, be re, akoko, ikedi. Ya gabbi, o be re. Keni, manoi. Fuwa, o be re, luri, pati, wa leko, ni no, ro, o be re, le wa yi. O je, iberi ti, afe bi, mama.
She, nini.
Be, nima.
She embomi.
Emboi.
Chérie. Ipati, o be re, ma ku. Luri, oro, te, be re. Oni, wipe, she mo pe. Omo, be re, lo momo. O ju, ya, lo si, o, ba, to, momo, omo ye. Omo, ya, no, la wa, ya wa, no, ma wa, fifu, wa, fada. One, i bi oki, te ba, daba, omo, omo, e, nemo. Elé, ini si, omo, odo, mo, awa, ya wa, la ma, fada si. Ntoli, wipe, on si, si ma, jele. Si, no, je, si, no, ome, si, no, oro. Si, novo, bonkon, ta, omo, wa, o, pi, mo, e, ni, ta, je, mo. Mo fe, ko, ko, je, ka, mo, wipe. Ije, gabai, bobon, ko, ta, she. Si, awa, ya wa, o, balo, o si, ni, she, she. Ta, wa, ba la ba. Awa, ya, mi, afi, jo, ya, ni, more, e, bobo. Mo, didé, o, awa, ya, meta, loa. Iya, fufu, adje, onu, ni, talajé, onu, oshun. Adje. Ye, moja. Bobo, awa, o, ri, sha, o, be re, o, ye. Awa, ya wa, ni ye. Oda, wa, ya, no, ni, kapadasi. Ka, lo, bo, be re. Ko, loa, o, resora wa. So, ipa, o, ibo, lo, o, bo. Money, behind a successful man, is a woman. Taba, forty, ti, wa, no, fu wa. Wa, fiti, wa, fu wa, e, nini, e, eji. Opalop, awa, baba wa, lo, ja, wipe, o, wa, ni, ta, ni, be ye, on si, chelo. Ni, bobo ba, iyani, o, mba, ni, le. Awa, ya, ba la ba, ta, si, pu. Na, la ma, lo ba, pe, jo, ya wa. Eh, ni, odu, bobo, ro, ba yi, ni, a, coco, ba yi, ba yi. Si, awa, chele, konchele, ba yi. Ki ni, awa, ya wa, awa, agala ba, be re wa, ki ni, wa, che si, oro, ye. Wa, so, fony. Ida, ke, di, no, agodo, lo ba, awa, baba wa. Tori, ni, mo, bobo ba, oro, fi, ka, sho, fi, ka, sho, fi, ka, sho, fi. Opuné, loa, luri, jo, kujube. Ba, wa, ya wa, ba wa, ambe, on, wa, le, jadi ni. On, bo, ja, wa, le, on, be, konja, de, on, ta, ju, le, wa, tu, yo, gi, si, be, wa, tu, so, pe, e, bo, le, de. On, tu, so, fony, o, kilo, ri, ya wa, on, tu, so, fony. Kané, ru, dialogue, be ye. Ta, omo, wa, le, ko, eh, eh, ko, o, bo, la, ti, bo, o, fa, wa, ba la ba. Ti, omo, de, ban, she, kati, oda, eh, awa, ya, wa, ni, oda, kubu, wa, ta, kasiki, ya, ki, ba, ba, e di. O si, ya, mon si. Oni, ya, ki, ba, ba, e di, ayamono, a, ja, la, ti, she, kati, oni, komashi ye. Awa, mode, ti, o, bo, le, ti, o, grow, ni, si. Awa, la, ni, di, la, ti, groom. Awa, ba la ba, no, de, ni, la, ti, jo, ko. Kaso, kodoro, uti, taro, fuwa, rawa. Bobo, awa, biti, ane, a, debusi, kilo, no, abayo, krumbe. Ibi, no, oda, kokon, bulu, oda, kokon, su, ru, ni, kon, a, le, fi, yo, ju, kon. Eh, ni, to, ba, de, ni, su, ru, yo, jo, go, ayé. Oni, su, ru, no, lori, sha, longo, ti, e. Eh, le, yo, sa, re, di, no. Eh, le, yo, ki, she, pe, ko, ja, pata, ki, she, pe, ko, ti, e. Na, ni, ti, o, wa, le, si, go, on, fojua, on, foju, nu, o, oro, abayo. Krumbe. Kadema, kamaji, no, si, i, she, she, kamaji, no, si, fa. Amono, awa, baba, ati, ye, ye, wa, ni ye. Ti, obati, si, ote. Ti, otisi, o, u, di, je. Ti, otisi, je, ni, le, se. Ti, o, si, tembe, le, ku, kosi, ni, su, ru, le, she. Ibiti, koba, be, ti, fe, da, ru, eseké, se, no, no, ma, fi, ho wa, abani, su, ru. Ona, abayori. Ona, abayori. Aba, jo, wa, ono, ni, o, be, ru, dori. Ke, yo, komas, oké, eh, awa, la, mo, ti, be re, eh, ni, ba, kon, oni, be re, ki, shon, i, she. Eh, ni, to, ba, wa, be di, ori. Ono, lo, je, karibi, abayo. Moshin, ba la, durase, ipe, oni, ka, luku, wa. Ah, ribati, she, o. Ah, ron, o, be, ba, o. O, ju, ni, ti, wa, o. Ni, ba, ki, ba, tabani, o, o, la, ti, fi, si, apu. Ni, ba, awa, etu, ati, e, toto, ye, ka, she. Toro, ko, bo, ono, lo, ndo, di, di. Ka, jo. Ka, da, o. Ka, jo. Ka, foju, ah, no, ka, fojua, no, wa, awa, to, wa, le. Awa, ta, de, wa, le, no, ka, fojua, no, wa. Taba, fo, o, no, che, si, o, on, kon, ta, ba, ni, a, o, fe, fiche, oni, o, godo, fiche. Ka, de, bo, ala, le, da, da, on, be, wa. Ki, ita, je, si, le. Ko, ka, sen, le. Amo, ge, gabbi, in, koti, mo, bo, ti, mo, de, ti, ri, on, so, wipe. Awa, ni, ta, je, si, le. O, godo, ma, lo. Oni, o, godo, ma, lo, kon, o, wa, koba, li, xi. Ki, ya, mi, le, koba, li, dari, bobu, le, eji, wa, koya, ka, duro, luri, o. Ki, she, pe, ka, komani. Ka, ke, se, wa, ko, duro, lo, do, e, lo, do, bobo, she, she. Eh, he, awa, o, ni, she, she. Awa, ni, fa, o, lori, sha, awa, ni, je, si, wa, awa, ni, ma, ni. Se, bo, ti, peti, bobo, wa, ti, in, she, bo. Ni, orishi, ri, si, o, no, ti, wa. On, ta, taban, le, ta, in, she, ono, ni, she, she. Ma, ade, tu, so, pe, nothing is good or bad until put to use. Ono, ulan, ba, to, la, ti, be re, lo, wa, o, she, she, wa, ki, ni, ka, she, a, be re, o, no, kon, ki, in, she, no. Bobo, o, bo, to, ba, de, wa, ni, nu, bobo, wa, ta, fi, nu, kora, wa, yo, kuru, nu, wa, halaa, ke, kiri, ati, wa, halaa, na, la, eh, je, ka, jo, so, pa, po. Kabali, mushé.
Bluetooth mode.
Yes, embomi.
Bluetooth mode.
Emboi, ma, emboi, ma.
Kabali, kabali, mushé, a, de, godo, kogo, la, ti, o, du, arawa. Ka, kogo, la, la, to, du, awa, bawa, ta, wa, bawa, no, kon, jo, ku. Kon, kon, no, mo, bo, ti, awa, mo, o, mo, ta, omo, o, mo. Ento, aba, jo, wa, o, nu, be, ru, dori. She.
E she, bu, ba, ben, ya, janama. E she, bu, ba, aduké. Eh, epo, i, jo, po, ayitie, enawa, soké, awa, be, yo. Aw, pe, iti, eh, wa. Udi, be re, ya, wa, be re, iti, a, a, sit down, yeah, be re. Eh. Iberi ti, o, kampai. Oma, losi, odo, baba wa, eh, o, godo. Eh. Oro, luri. Awa, lo, she, du, ina, ni, o. Mo, solè, ka. Wipe, eh. Eh, iti, koba, ma, eh, yitomi. Aba, eh, yitame, ne. Keni, imo, ti, anifwa, awa, lo, she, lu, le, yoruba. Luri, oro, o, minira, ilé, wa, ti, ansora, ba, baba wa, e, o, godo. Okay. She, a, boy, be re, ya, sa, baba wa, e, o, godo.
Obo.
Okay, emboi.
Eh, e she, mo du kalo oni.
Yes.
Chérie, a, olo, she, du, wa. Ele, ti, koni, ele, ti, koni, wa. Wa, e, she, eh, iti, eh, ya, wa, advice, be. Kalifuné, ma, to, di, wa, i, bo. Wa, i, bakadala, after, ba, ba, demato, bakuduru. Eh, chérie, ala, lu. Wanti, ma, wa, ona, ma, di, Denis, si, like, be, ya, ina, mama, bo, ba, to, ba, ya, ele, ma, ti, ma, ri. Shumà, ala, lu, ya, da, olo, she, du, alè, kon. Ona, ti, o, fuma, da, o, le, kon, wa. O, de, po. To, ripwe, omo, pe, a, olo, she, du, ni, bo. Ne, no, awa, padé, kota, wa, ti, she. A, de, ripwe. Eh, pe, ra, oni, ya, ka. A, ripwe, no, ti, bi, a, oni, ya, po, po, ju. Awa, ya, deti, fa, la, o, si, le. La, ti, be, da, la, wa. E, je, di, abawa, olo, o, she, so. So, pe, a, fe, ba, olo, she, mu, so, lo. She, olo, she, di, ta, ekoba. Twenty million, lo, shoe. Abi, tong, ba, five million, lo, shoe. Show, le, ma, so, fony, ipe, Yoruba, nation. Ché, pantara, wa, di, ni, eh. Tu, wa, ba, monta, an, she, ka, wa, pa, u, bo, na, ni, wa, mama, lu. La, ti, je, be, komashi, she. Eh, ni, to, di, o, ga, wa, ti, nou, bu, pa, la, ti, nou, bu. Kosi, te, liba, so, to, le, ba. Su, ba, ti, awa, u, sa, flan, ita, ba, da, ta, ba, dan, to, ma. Tum, ba, pa, da, le, ye, re. Fu, ra, ra, re, ya, ma, wa, Yoruba, di, shaka, kiri, pe, ka, wa, be, da, o. Su, ba, ti, o, ba, ti, ka, di, no, yo. So, ba, ti, ka, di, ni, no, yo. Kuni, ja, wa, ni, no, a, konti, yo. So, we, pe, a, olo, she, du. Eh, eh, you, ni, para, of, me. Wa, le, go, ah, le, advice, o, to, eh, omo, te, eti, e, ba, fe, advice. O, bo, no, di, eh, di, ni, ka, de, pe, yo, le, ti, ti, o, fi, boro. Su, ba, o, le. O, le, koki, de, kou, le, la, ti, ma, dali. Ti, o, ba, ti, ri, to, ju, e, ba, ti, ri, ti, o, feri. So. Eh, o, ju, o, ri. Wa, ka, di, no, your, like, be, like, di, na. It, to, ripwe, awa, ke, ke, wa, to, lo. Ti, alibas, oni, se, ye. Eh, ya, ma, bu, o, bo, o, ba, ya. Ni, e, ke, like, di, na, eh, ma, bu, o, bo, fu, ra, moni, wa, awa, sa, wa, sa, wa, sa, wa, ni, le, pa, la, ta, ni. It, to, ri, ba, ti, ma, ri, ka, to, le, wa. Wa, ti, ni, to, le, wa. Wa, ti, ni, to, le, wa. Koda, si, te, ma, ri, to, le, ti, o, ne, pa, da, si, ni, le. Wa, pa, da, ba, wa. Ni, a, ba, la, la, ru. Awa, ni, ka, shira, wa, lo, kon. Awala, godo, da, le, yoruba. Awala, godo, da, ya, wa, awa, a, sha, a, 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 shu, wa, di, wa. Ah, de, godo, da, le, o, di, wa. Ti, a, ba, ti, da, le. Ti, a, de, fe, ki, kaka, Africa, ka, eh, ka, eh, ka, ke, ke, ki, abi, ka, ti, te, ti. Ta, fidan, ka, ru. Eh, amash, amabé, bo, pe. Ah, de, yo, no, logo. Ti, eto, da, milo, di, ne, ye. Su, ma, pe, olo, she, du. Eh, kado, eto, Paris. Eh, ya, ma, ri, a, o, ka, ti, o, ma, she, le. Si, wa, eh, mi, unisso, Dubai, lo. Su, ba, ya, ka, foka, ba, le.
E she, bu, ba, baba wa. Eh, awa, ri, yiba. Eh, nibai, eh, ya, ki, awa, si, odo, awa, ti, awa, wa, lo, ke. Awa, ti, wa, wa, ni, di, ero. Awa, ni, oma, ba, ni, she, to, la, na, ti, o, fiche. Ari, awa, ala, ba, da, ya, ba. Ari, awa, ala, ba, slimon. Ari, awa, ala, ba, a, de, jamu. Ari, awa, baba, je, misi. S20FE. Lucky. Eh, eh, ya, ki, a, koka, ke, si, ala, ba, da, ya, ba. Ki, wa, be re, be re, wa, ni, shoki. Iberi, ka, oni, afia, yuka, yo. Eh, ma, be re, be re, eh, ni, ka, iberi, ka.
Oda, e she, o, eh, akuka, le, o, gugule. Eh. Uju, a, be re, ni, kuda, si, un, she, iberi. M'ungu, ra, wa, e, besi, gubwa, wa, le, gue, mini. Ugu, e, ya, mo, yo, ba, tata. Awa, baba, le, wa, sa, ipé, eh, ka, ne, ka, po, yi, ye, ni, ye, ni. Eh. Ane, pe, i, jo, ni, si, je, jo, ni, ya. Oni, ti, yo, kabash, a, du, ta, ba, du, ba, te, le, o, kuba, ba, eh, ni, tu, da, ono, no. Eh, no, fofu, ndu, ya, mu, ya, mu, edakon, o, falon, be, ini. Owo, ta, si, fi, ko, ya, alon, e, fi, wa, wa. Ije, ngba, la, un, she, in, koti, a, eh, ama, fi, o, wa, la, somu. To, ba, ti, e, di, e, pe, $10, lo, shoe, shoe. Ato, lo, she, lune, o, ati, lu, du, kukui, e, go, ni, o. Awa, karamba, oni, i, o, le, mi, wa. Wa, te, je, ke, wa, wa, ta, wa, ni, o, ki, o, kon, e, kon, i, edakon. Edakon, o, to, be, he, si, ni, le, kon, edakon. Eh, fuwa, awa, baba wa, edakon. Awa, ra, bi. What is, or, awa, di, ki, ba, ki, ba, wa.
I want more one, yeah, come on, come on, touch you see, I want a balaba. Eh, ni ni eh, at, I want building. He woman go, Asha, I want him go. When you tell the Asha, I want him go, if, if she, watch him wash, or watch him solo, see you. To repeat, she, you get a go me, Rara?
I'm going, Ima. Oh, oh, two two mutu, by you. Your line is muted again. You still remain muted. We are not hearing you. Okay. Okay, I share, go, you bye.
Hmm. I want building, I shout to you, I come, come, I want more. Oh, she, oh, condo, don't. Can you get, I want more, my story, do more than you. Can you, if you phone that takes, spell the look on my mom. In that, tell you my BF, friendship, the Facebook. So, I'm, if you phone that takes, spell the look way. For a day. Eh, for a day, the look way, oh, I can, eh, co, forest day. Co, forest day, what about any? Moni, she, be the bag, I'll be a fada. How does you, that do what's be? Ah, I want, Asha, she, oh, yeah, Kamako, he lay la, he lay la, oh, Kato, so, my, the look of. I want, balaba, no, she missed it, yeah. That, I want, I've a proven, it's a fool, be a, I'm a banyer, he not a proven, you found. I want, my, I'm here. To figure, eh, I come, bad, I want, I love, eh, beg, beg, no, the look, I want, I want, come on, be the call, I need, he be cook, eh. Come on, come, eh, co, co, co. I want, I'm meeting, I'm, I'm, see, you, da, I want, I want, I live, for Julie. I want building, Kamani, so, the front, I want, I want, I want. To repeat, I'm, I'm, who, so, the front, I know, eh, I'm, I'm, sita. That, eh, you, she, oh, cool, the, the, my, I want, I want, I want, I'm, I'm, sita. I'm, I'm, sita. Tabat, he, the four, so, I want, I want, so, I want. I'm, see, oh, I want, so, I want.
Oh she the man to do late do do late amanawo nonle fu ni noule. Because I'm one come on door is a quick then there is no much on ground. A coco move it move it a code jack way Baba wine no ma Baba down with bury yeah collect kill it da da.
Yeah Baba way.
Eh she eh ke di new way Baba way you both do. Yeah yeah my queen or okay so nice. I want counsel can can can. One day mo mo go lo do go lo go what on go wanee arrow it a quack by you. When he say is la no matter let let be you buy you at all. Goto di we pay moi long ba la ala ibi do back on. There Bali be ready to Baba watosorobelek on. What we are me a play luba bawa who love who who want to the bike. Eh then you pay eh oh 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 you Obama click in it can he or laugh. Abu Bubata bassa we pay addo dutini abi ali di kuweni niya mi o man ye de you batimotune lo to to the kidada.
Eh kony merre eh kony merre.
Eh she eh kony merre o do to wa pay le. Subashay you baouli tele tele tuan wa rabi way do ba le. You Baba ti ya ti woni ke to lo ri da la po mama eh she.
Okay eh eh she more to call ohi. I like go go die very eh I'm on door. Uh since that eh since that session. Lo do lady do do late. Uh. Oh wowaluba. Oh wow Londoni. To the colon to for she. I water I want eh location for one night. I'm a be a Jew. That Jack way I'm on door wa. Or you know. I'm alright like this yeah I'm go con. You can eh. About yeah one market manager. About strange sorrow. I see I'm being. Ke ke ki. I'm a malo attend the radio program and she be by eh. Uh I'm a creating more awareness. That Jack weekend eh addetibere beside the way eh. I want to come away from you the mass for me by eh. So it part better beside the way eh. To monepui alloma alloma for she. So our programs that you wa. Tamashi Lori eh Lori eh keji. Eh. Way la la she la no mo you pay. Ah go the bar I want to be shiny. Go she pay he la no mo pa go the bang she. Go she pay Baba omo pay ah go the bang she one more. Where do you have would you would yes or no? Eh te da would you would she no? Eh te eh da ka wo boyah ulu kotepe wo da ngenje.
Hmm.
One of our fly away. You pay ulu kote one pay ah one ah you want dead.
Hmm.
Tell me for our one ah the fly away.
Hmm hmm hmm.
Be cool yeah bad eh palie. To do fire. I want to hear like them one. Eh te dona. Oh la se fair wa ki wa pa po.
Hmm.
Eh show you a to she I want eh. Wanting want be far to. In ninety. Want be able. Want be far to I will allow so you're on one eh. That is the display of madness. Can I pay? Display of madness. Can you say pay? All the party eh you to bad bo as only. Come on to make only score score Lori. You know say eh. You know around eh. You know they eh in that make only score score. So we pay on okay back in eh Baba wa mo you pay one more kote eh. One day me eh to a dead. So maybe I will be why eh pay. But she very very never say eh when I worry. On a few bang she. On a enough but what do I do eh accurate eh be. What do I do eh biti? Oh focus you know no eh. So I'm a the key. Our we shouldn't waste too much time on this. I become a group we are making a book share corina lucia corrie eh. Eh then was so last week we. Tabara body eh. You know met Talawa need a you ba. Say about me. You know you know metta you know metta Luwa need a you ba. You know a coco. You know ba. You know ba you know ba you know you ba a coco. You know keji you know woman do. You know Keta you know eh ruh. Cherry you know ba I tell you man do way fair when you only go that keep go to. I just say for total total man total man oh my wall ah neo ba. You know ba I tell you man do. So by my you know eh ruh demand can ruh.
Hmm.
And you come up eh no me pay for that she wa die in a rumor. Moni accurate eh be just a bit eh. Oh focus you know. You know you not do you ah la eh pay. You know eh ruh eh. Me no la me tan to taba theory eh the catie da ruh eh back eh eh ruh eh. Come on eh pay eh normal eh ruh eh. If you have a one so. Oh tan so you go go you so you go. So eh pay Robani. Oh you have a one so. Can you saw? Tan saw you go go you saw you go. So but I'm a dead pay eh eh ruh eh. You have a color. You shall bushy. You have a color. You okay you okay you medit. You okay you better. Maybe I was if I say me to feed a ruh. To the movie my tell man. May I'm a巴拉ida. Eh巴拉isso di toro. Oh my yani eh. Oh my Papa Nini. Oh my la ni eh. Oh your friend eh ne. Eh ya no ba. No they ke je oh my la no. Ojo de ni ti eh de ni kabamo.
Asher.
She would ah eh very eh.
Benisa eh she pu po.
I'm a toku.
Uh oh when he had a DC me. I'm a prepare you want be ready eh it's over fair eh wa. Uh lenye eh uh. How could I dare easily? How can boss do eh?
Eh kaleo bobole.
Ah.
Eh kaleo.
I'm going here oh Arab in the ABC. I'm a be no pay us okay I like only.
I'm a be no be eh.
Yeah.
Yeah. You do me carry be open long by eh so.
Oh eh she pu po eh. Eh DC.
I bear eh me oh. I bear eh ke ke eh me. Shugma me my boyah. Mole eh bear eh bear eh low. Oh Baba. Bang dia kito eh. To bawa be to bang bomi.
Eh eh bear eh bear eh 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 you tell my.
Okay.
But it's so. I go make you like eh.
Eh bear eh. Oh okay. I bear eh me da Lori or central or no central account. Tea at you a lenwe la ti joy. Move fam oh. Iboni you want borrow the Lori eh we ati bawoni. Oh my boss it amabes cinema feel was be eh story.
Eh she pu po.
Anilo la ti mafia.
Eh 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 she pu po eh a capo eh bobobo. What have you eh. My one eh yo eh la. Uh I want eh. Oh name eh oh oh gushola eh you know gushola. Uh you rock which was silly I bet oh. I bear eh you know they like yo. Boni eh oh she down eh.
Moki wa la pa po. La la wa coni daso fo.
Asher.
Moki wa wa ke to eh. About to come on to way on to way to seven. Those two twenty one struggle. Oh no, you you value for anyone.
Asher.
And you la bro ah I'm a top. Oh no eh nakaki. And it's a play eh one.
Sure.
Kimo pa Kimo. Kimo for a gun. But so so come in eh you know mudada eh gushola. Oh my lose eh but eh eh many no kogo. You look me ati bo ati lugo ho I do para la coni. As you want to show we not to oh do meta. Ni pay eh oh 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 to suleka water de mo face so kiss ya can Canada eh can. Because bu boh oh Lori oh one eh. And eh so bass you oh you see oh see. I so far run budget a run budget a run budget Lori zero revenue. I could go on to continue to last you yo. Because eh we could to parry. To parry leni. I said eh ke eh want to eh you know test is Canada. Eh 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 de depan. But on that line oh stay. But you know I'm million Nara. It's just if you're in a city. He look to on the load ah Baba. The baby want to fo eh. One point six. Eight zero. Better and eh see one point eight zero because they want to pocket money. Oh so to one one eh. Oh holy one eh. Oh we just slow eh but oh so that I know eh. Baba do belo. I say case one. North Saint Oui. But eh timo oh no oh my duty oh. I call you eh be oh. Long bad way oh. Need a keji. Mo ah robot ah ta wa ni Lumi na like by eh. Need clean eh. Need Brazil eh eh book eh eh. Ata wa ta wa ne Nigeria. Monrova. Ka ne ka 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 ca so toto. Oh tan so far eh be Allah oh lo one eh and eh you but to lead that's what I see. I miss so far so far oh. Ah me a rumba oh. Ah me get away from alo oh ni fe fi sa. Can't it be bassa can't eh be. So I'm a really eh at fun Baba. Bassi to see a can't me ne Nigeria. To reja ti Canada eh can. Why you to Canada what city pete le. But I'm a for us eh. Oh jacky I can't eh come on eh eh card eh ba. That is eh credit card or whatever eh eh. So once of eh would be in this to total eh. I want to parry she Lori at eh but eh eh dollar eh. Dollar sin I'm a sense eh inure. Oh to I'm figure eh wa eh I want to eh more. Illo Atlanta no eh by eh ne America. More wa for holiday. And this is a little do me takentopadale. So cuz it bit ah wa. Ta ne da oh. Cuz it bit ah wa. Ta ni le mo to account. So Monroe wa I want to eh ti mother. Eh yanne wa lo. Kalidao. I want to as in Dana. Cuz it has seven oh my your ba. So tito. Because taba bond eh Baba wa. Bassi gun so like eh. Ne pa. Agba loyani. Ashi ba ni. Agba sector eh. Baba oh ni oh fo anil eh one eh bad eh because it's a sector eh. You to pay eh tan lo tele. Oh ba oh ba oh so to ah galon eh. What you fo ah quit no tele eh but twenty come ah krumb eh mo. Ben ba ba wa eh ah oh my oh le eh more gaso go. Ah you co ni eh da eh wa krumb eh. But I saw my base eh. Oh file eh one eh. I need oh few eh ne la ti to see. Oh si oh si can can I want eh no research eh.
Abino, eh se deki pasuari bila handule, tomba wa ra, abituba ekusisabisa wa ra. Because, okay, Baba, Baba she was American. Oh, oh, like, oh, like, yeah, you want to see, you know, to be like, because it's a big solar, she wa ra. Abi pasuari bila wa ni better clarity, Lord, yeah, it will be more than me.
Eh, she, eh, and the connoisseur made you about one, you're really, that way, buddy, down in there. I say, Muduka, eh, Jack, eh, downward, you can kill it. Um, he barely allowed to see, yeah, you need to go, buddy. I repeat more than one year, people keep asking that same question. But there is a way that just so. Um, cut about your two, only, that's a poor man go. And then moving in one thing start by moving and not naripet. I'll you pay egg ba, you're back off, see, you know what they do, we are poker, you bet. Buana la talk as we play, oh, my Baba, they were by implication, oh, my land. Oh, the boo, boo, eh, you, whether we, oh, yeah, our, so, so, allow. Small bad, but we pay, but when it's too bad, they fail, still be near a lay, you, but lot of. Most, one way or the other, she check well do, um, continue, I will, Lord, you are be late. Now, in the, eh, Jack, I will go to Solati, Bill.
Oh wa di ono yo fola tishé yowasuka ni e de yoruba. Oh wa losi no bibeli, you know i we loko. Eh yori keni bi esel omo ni o losi. Oh wa lo she. O fa esekoye ni e de gessi ni be. O tumoi o koni e de yoruba. I ye ni e de yoruba ti akoko kosile ni a bayi. Onti o si koni odunno long. Oh ni be eh yitio yung le inore ni no. Oma olaronge ni a oma pe. O kolon ni o l o r u n g. Le di o tumo si ke eh oh nyutio wa ne inore ye o oma olon ni a oma pe. I ye ni yoruba ti akoko kosile ni o di ayi. La ye ye ni onika lukuan ko boche boche wuwa. Imo washokololi da o pa o ni a o she makonya yoruba. Ni odun. La ni odun nineteen sixty five sixty six ni joba iwa o. Oh wa begi ma koto e de yoruba kale. Be korono. Kosi daraki onika lukuma akor. Aworoyoruba sile bi o she wuwa. Awashia awa orishirishi la lo. Ti a oma afikom. Eh ni no e de yoruba. O si onti amosijou. Oh konstunanti. Oh oh le konstunanti me. Eh apareni di eh oké meta. Titi me ah inue. Oh wa neka djiati kokou. We ti geni o wulo. Awan fa welli na lo orishirishi ti o wulo ti a fisine e de. Otoka si fuwa. Ah i j e ti anpe ni ayé. Shubon ti ankosile ni ah i ye. Ibi ma koto e wani kamui dabasoke ba e de yoruba. Ti a ma ako boche ye. Eh awa oromi ti oja pe. Eh anko pako. Gagabi oroko watoka si fuwa. Awabi negati. Wani oromejini kama ako niga kasi koti. Ni tori ke. Oromejini ni tori ati ke kama koni eh yorokomo. Bi oti le jepe akoko lankotele. Wani kama shebemo. Kama akoni ototo. Bi dabasoke shendeba e de yorubareo. Be 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 loni e de yoruba ti kwajia. Oro ba o ni washenko ba o ni washenko. O ti dinga ti wonke kobo ye luriye. Eh yitie ba wasi inu epade la na omo odua. Eh oma goe re re ala ye. Luri i dabasoke e de yoruba. Ati mu laissez laissez. Eh diaki wakada si ori. Onti mo kokoso we go go le she e de. Oni e de yoruba. Ki wache gira maniko. Tabi phonology. Tabi akoto. Ni dabasoke fili debay e de yoruba. Ne pa mulo re na ni. Opolo koni ati koni e koni university. To wati ba o ye ni ne magila yoruba. To wa orishé. Latu. Ti abakuru amobé joba po. Weki wa ki wa ki wa be resini. Ko orishirishi i i we a tumo. Ati we luri awa eh koyoku. Lonati oma afirong. Latu ti yoruba komo. I she taku taku. Onlo wa ni a ri. Aleluwé de yoruba. Ni li e jo la esia gabagé. Eh adajo odioma yoruba. Eh olupé jo ati olujaja jo odioma yoruba. Loyati yoma re jo odioma yoruba. Shubon e ba ti adili e jo e de gessi labesini so. Atoma la wa o gufa. Ti omo tumo e de gessi si yoruba. Fungogo ama yoruba. Ata we re wuna. To wa dioma yoruba. To wa wa ni li e jo ni la yoruba. Tanio wa mo ke agaba ge de le yi yo. Tabi i dogmo tankuru. Kinkomoba lo jutu olambakiri. Ni no. Awetachanu deno wa. Aleli onti a o mulo ni be. Ti o diaki i dabasoke kobai luwa. Ne ba ti abaga o minera. Eh ma abame kalau. Eh bua wa kulo unwe. Eh no bibé. Abidi tapala tapala. Nlo di fa funbo juri. Ti shoba wani luwa she she yo o. Ti yo fire ya ye dalu. Ne ba ti yo fire ya ye dalu koo. O shekupa male yo. O shekupa male yo. Oh wa lori se sanki ibi laya. Ibi ori danesila abi. Nlo di fa fun male yo. Toro banile ti yo foluche shoko. Bi abajé ili ayé ningbe. Akinche mbelo di ono. Nlo di fa fun sanki ibe. Ti yo ti toriki aso obale ke lori fi obaloko. Onti agbananu mi ki sheme lo lo so. Awan babanla wani wati misile. Ni no ita tenu deno. Ba wani. Onti agba i she wale wulo fui dabasoke. O minera ile yoruba. Eh bo ke nekan wa ti wa ke ni bo juri. Ti shoba ilua she she yo o. Waya iluwa to tuta fe ba ini a she she yo o. Ati ilisso. Ni ilu biti awa bayi. Obaka wa ti yo wa ni ori. Ibi i i i i i bi i bi gagele ori apata. Eh mi oni darukore. Shubon ofe jobo juri na. Tabawo. Awansile bo e no bo juri. Ati oruko abati anuitongbe bi gagele ori apata i. Ofe dora bi o dora. Male yo. Oni obini robo dotodarakie gi. Ti bo juri ye. To fe fishaya. Shubon male yo. Oni ibi ori danesila abi. Onti ni afesono tombi kritile shoba. Oti a olong. Ni tori kama she ori alanga. Oso du kama she weni. Kofi onsile ki onu losi odon. Okoa afesono. Obataku oba oba. Male yo no. Olo fe eh ni to fe fe. O bioma konsebe. Oh wa dodo komo male yo loso no. La yitoti fe koto ti bioma ko. Ni bo juri ba lobambe. Eh no bibi abidi tapala tapala. O shapa sino ko. Boche inshab male yo pasino ko. Ni male yo kebe. Be itancha o no fyo ah o. Itancha o no fyo ah o. Itancha o no fyo ah o. Obao ba. Pa da sile mba to pa male yo konsebe. Oh many to pa male yo sino ko. Nga ojo gaté kojo gaté. Ofe kema foka bamibo. Akai moye awa eh ya. Ni bo juri ilu wa ti paba iti itancha o no ti ifiwana. Nga ti abadbe ru e koi wano. Eh konepa oro oshelu. Nga o oshelu wa oni be ru olong. We itancha o. Amasi eh ni to pa pa yo. Wonpa bolaige. Itancha o. Yo fe ni to pa bolaige. Wonpa biola. Itancha o. Yo fe ni to pa biola. Be 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 be. Awatimwata. Ti itancha o. Ti o fiwana. Eh diaki yama josi wadju. La yitii oba e pa male yo. Ni. Esanki ibe nlo ruko amotimale yo bi kale koto di ke onpa. Oh wa daba. Obao omo ke oma male yo ni esanki ibe. Lobato kono e fe si. Shee bakué. Bi abajé ili ayé ningbe. Akinche mbelo di ono. Nlo di fa fun esanki ibe. Ti yo ti toriki aso leke lori fi obaloko. Lobafe oba o. Lo ba dodo kanlo go nde fun oba. Ni o baba nde on. Ibiti le ti dalu loke. De di agomikilaa osani. Itancha o loba uwa no. O rule. Otosori onde ye. Ni o baba o lo ba be resinerai. Oh wa loti. Odotti onpa male yo. Odotti. Onso ke itancha o no fyo ah. Itancha o no fyo ah. Lobanre ni luri onde ye obadje. Ya ona obabinu. Kabie si onde la besi wadju i she. Eh. Onde latatoni iyo doni mka kache. Obani oloti. Ya ona obabinu. Ni o baba mbé ya wepe. Komobi no mka mati orokani. Ilu oro wani. Lobasoi to. Yi onche pa male yo. Oma na si ti bo ita yele no baba e. Bi omo she faro otani. Itancha o no fyo ah. Itancha o no fyo ah. Kam kawi afo. Orambaro nrofo. Bobo e lutiba. Diwa she maba bo juri ni yo. To wa fi ba o. Ni iluwa. Chari ru. Awa be kawa yi. Okuku ban tonchelle ni iluwa. Bo juri iluwa. Ki she aré neko. Botle jepe. Inti aré. Ile Nigeria nche bayi. Odo e wa bo juri. Ni aré bi gagele ori okutala ngwi o. I ilu dabi ra. Abaku watifirelu we dabi ra lobbe. Abaku e university meta imedi. Loti wa ni ilu dabi ra bayi. Be ni asigopé. Awansipitobi majin lala. Loti wa ni dabi ra. Shubon. Ibati. Oma wa wa ni be. Jo dabi ra bi. Nga ti joba ibadje ijoba o minera. King king. Kache ijoba awati karawa. Nga wa na onile dabi ra. Ni ilutwa. Nga ti bobo ama yoruba ba ni mo. Ne pa. Onto shelle si bo juri. Bi eh no bibi abidi tapala tapala boche dabafu. Nga wa oni to wa omo bosho. Ne ba ti oba di ori ko. Kama konso ke. Politics eh political science. Ti legesi olama makon. Ki afi e de yoruba. Asha yoruba. Ki afi koi koi yoruba. Ni la noti yoruba. Lonati yoruba. Yofi goke odo. Yofi we. Yofi yo koi ke. La ujo. Nga bobo awati awa lo di wuwa yi. Awani male yo. Awan long kebe pe bi ori danesila abi o. Ile o odua luri da wasio. Asin kebe pe afé o minera ile o odua. Awani male yo. Ibi ori danesila abi o. Bobo awa doti wa wa to wa diaki konju. Awabi eh shift Sunday goho. Ati awa mira to wa ti diaki konju. To wa onso luri kani. Awani esanki ibe. Awani esanki ibe. Ati male yo. Ati bo juri. Ati esanki ibe ni la odua. Eh di eh kapawo po. Akbe de wala rugé. Akdi jagbara. Akba o minera i. Anfa ne banta banta. Olaui ni be. Otoleno. Okunsiku o. Eh shekupo. Baba wa rokoshi ashewambe. Ki abia eh odaké baba wa usman afesono. Ah. This is wonderful. Oh okbe de kodia abashilero. Eh she eh she eh she iki la eh she iki la rugé i de wa tashawa. Let's marry the feeling Leo. Asher. Eh she we are proud of you sir. Eh shekupo. The continuity of war eh she had to. Eh eh di ba te kya wa anle odua ni eh di kamo pokiri la warara. Asher. Asher. Ah odabia ni ke. Ati lo kodia kokoti alero. I wa kati metal aso ke afé lo. Odaké ati no meni lo bayi. Ah baba rokoshi awambe. Okay. Ti wa obasi. Bete obasi si onkuti ato fe somo. Ah adura ti. Afi. Ah kabaye padinile. Oni yoku. Ti afé. Eh ashodu wani Canada. Arabi re akin kuoto. Oni afi oro adura na sileno. Shubon ki wanto badura. De kana ra waliti. Epade ti ilano USA. Odi ojo meson ni. Ni ddé agogo mefa ale. Oni kapade. Ni tori epade ti oni. Oni oni diaki ya padé niola. Ah arabiri wa. Akin kuoto. Ti ebawa ni uwi la. Edapwe bawa fi. Ah adura. Hasai otominile. Ti wa obasi ni be. Enne kene lati Canada chapter. Oh wati wati wambe. Eh wo mutu wa. Eh you are muted ma. You are still muted. Okay.
Ogoni fumaba ogoni foma ogoni follow along me. You two are like a shame. Ombe ni singi. Ben yos mari. Je eh josai mbe no. Please pardon me, I'm going to pray in my church. Ah prayer. Jehovah. Yesu Chrissy, only my care. Lord Father, we thank you for this gathering. Jehovah, we thank you for this gathering. One more time, you are so excellent in everyone's life. From our father to the youngest one. Please God, accept our time today and forevermore in Jesus' name. Lord's Father, we put everything under your care. We put everything under your canopy. Continue be our pilot. Continue be our driver. Continue be our master key in the mighty name of Jesus. We are calling you God to please intervene into this gathering to what we are praying for. We are putting the land of Nigeria under your care. Please God, totally take control of that Nigeria in the mighty name of Jesus. Since how many years will be praying? We are seeking. We are knocking. We are looking unto your face to answer us, to answer our prayer. For roads for the Yoruba nation to stand by themselves as we did in those days. For the Israelite, you are seen able. You are seen dear. Your name did not change. You are changing but changer. Please God, this year come and answer our prayer about this yoruba in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Enough is enough, Father. We don't want to be slaves anymore. God, please. Every life of slavery. I repeat myself. Every means of slavery. Every destination of slavery. Father Lord, let them be removed permanently away in Yoruba land in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord Father, we are asking for the unity. Please Father, because when we are in one, we can move mountains. When we are in one unit, everything can be done. Please Father, help us to be a one in accord in the mighty name of Jesus. Please God, I pray for our fathers. Lord Father, because I cannot say they are very old, they are very younger. Please Father, bless their age and please be with them forevermore in the mighty name of Jesus. And we that we are see young, Father Lord, continue pray for us in Jesus' name. And throughout the whole world wide because of Nigeria that we are gathering now. It's not because of another country, another state that. But because of Yoruba Nigeria. Lord Father Lord, you shall grant this our land for us in Jesus' name. Because as our father have said, there is no bloodshed. It's not that we don't know how to fight. It's not that we don't know how to do that, do that. But you say it's going to be in peace. Please Father, by yourself, separate the devil from us in the mighty name of Jesus. Please, Lord Father, we put Sunday goho. Oh da yo kiye. He shall never die in that way he is in the mighty name of Jesus. Please, Lord Father, has to protect Joshua. He lead them. Please Father, protect Sadi and his family in the mighty name of Jesus. Because before Sunday was born. I believe that this thing was being dead, that we have been struggling for this yoruba. And after Sunday was born, he's been dead. Suddenly, you God, you know about this issue. I believe that you sent Sunday to go and do this thing and you will finish it for us. Please Father, by the time that you grant this land of Yoruba for us. Do not let Sunday be no fun anywhere in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Please God, as I remove it, as I.
Oh no, I to God, wow. Odabia ni.
We thank you, Father. We thank you, God, for our father. As we are going to sleep, let us sleep with God with peace and joy and happiness. So that tomorrow and next week, we shall come to glorify your holy name. In Jesus' name, I pray.
Amen. Amen to Jesus. Like you can see, eh. Oh wa pe.
Baba wa eh. You ba shen pe mi leni konye.
Uh huh.
That book be ya diwa ti yo boom boom mi kosoro. Oh wa gi di ni.
Eh odabia eh ba wa pe eh alaba. Eh pastor. Shei. Ki wa fo wani boat of tanks. Epade ti fe ko basile bayi. Baba rokosi.
Eh eh ki pastor. Shei wa ribi lola. Di fe la wa baba wa boku ti wa walo. Oni kanti mogu ipe ya ki boboma yoba o muri le. Eh kato de ya ka muri le. Oni ipe. Eh di kala sofe ni medji metal oni o. Kalasofu. Eh ri. Ati pataki towa ni no. O minera ra ni. Eh ni kashore ni medji eh ni medji shore ni meni o. Nta ma muri le ni ye. Eh she modupe. Onu shaguta ribi lola. Eh yoba wa dupa la o go go mwenya wa. Eh she.
Oh wa luri la. Pastor Ari Bilala, Boat of Tanks. Okay. Alaba Usman. Eh eh ba wa she Boat of Tanks. Asho wa muta. Okay. We are passable a busy day. Eh muki buboyle konsebe ke ki ashori tankira wani no rebela no mo odua we pe onola. Eh ah fasti ko itupe lo bobo. Omo ebe lotunlo siata. Onti wakinsho magbe tomawa yo ju seto ileni. Obe la tori on baba wa. Professor Emory Tors, professor. Adébandi akito ye baba. Eh mani mobile in the mobile. Oko inu ruko moto be. Bosuri baba wa deputia la no. Professor Adewale Adenino. Awan jobon puponya. Awan tonkuwa jo. Tsubaki shepe. Bolo basheni le yoruba lo ni. Awata jo mo fui. Bigba te kya to wa ni bitewa ni. Amo kya wa leba ni to poluri. Eh ya elo ero ayi ludja ra ta donso ro pa kwa. Anfa ne la lo jefuwa. Sa dupe lo wa iku po pe. Eh tiwa siwa dupe kama ni show. Eh de fuwa lemba konkon. Adu po polo o yo. Awan fasti ko itupe lo baba wa no lati lunare kingdom. Eh ba shebu. Doctoro alé oni. Eh she had to pe sao pe akinye je wa. The same thing, luri mama wa. Mama wa taiwo lija du. Idiara isukun eh di jobi. Oni oni lo jo roguo jo roju ya eh. Hmm. Obalo roba man so ipe. Oh long di ka roguo adani konpele eh roguo adani konpele mama. Oh iti ro. Idami di diretongpele ni kon. Eh iku po le wa ba yo. Obado maro nefin lemba konkon. Asher. Ogboni mati ye te fi fuwa jelini. Bi unje eh mi. Adu po polo ya tuwa mari ba. About ito luri le. Ah fasti no dupe lo wa baba wa. Eh adikule eh robudo. New General Secretary of Villanova Dua Worldwide. Lati Lu Karo Jiri. Eh shekupo. We eh wa pe. You are for most four hours. Buguala mo continue to encourage new land. And for you to have stayed that long. Does have cost you a lot. Shows your interest, your concern. And your belief. That is by Leo Karo Jiri eh she had to pe lo wipo. Back on our fasti. Di pe lo bubo me be. Ta ono yo juicy bileni. Bata mashé onka uka ta jo bele padé. Again, one or five. That's by we pe ato pariwe puponya o. Amo ba shile dipe lo wo boyo taba pariwe diye lo. Eh moye toma wambe. Eh shekupo had to pe lo i. Asu ba onto ba she to. Ito ba wa kujio. Obe la tori doctor Remi Bamishile. Kuti eh she ti accomolate yoruba te tabu wa kada sile. Awanto wa le Karo Jiri gomo rope. On lafai si konte fuwalini. Ni no i de yoruba. In fact, ati America, I be Canada, I be in Blan la warara. Eh shekupo aba. Adu po lo o yo. Bosuri on baba wa no on baba wa ropoire. Yoruba Kingdom TV. Bosuri baba omo boyo o. Lati Lu United Arab Emirates. We just cannot thank you all enough. Iyongu go go angba. Obado mari. To fuwalini she. Itoku atu ba iyondjo. Ole pe lo juwani. Amo otishé she no. In konkota man so fuwa wani la no mo duwa USA. Ni we pe. Ali sopama ba le yoruba le ni kododa. Ateli sopama balu si tombo. Kodushi meta. Bo inkonkota alu di ni we pe. Ama ba le yu bayi. Buti le onkori ama ba. Really diwa ma dadu yeti di no do. The sovereignty of the Yoruba land is a must and it's gonna happen. Olu kota ba fe pe. Oh olon banie wa. We have effect ni Karo Jiri nation new. Yoruba country new. Odua republic new. United Luabi kingdoms new. Orisha da nations new. Yeah. Obo ye inkoye kiri oli di maraba iyondju ye. Amo ito ya no doni pe. Really diye ma dadu. Well, I share with Mari. So continue me first odiye lo. Eh she had to pe upo. Ateli bari. Ali no kore.
So, continue first, oh jo, eh she aduke opo, adelibari, ali no kore, afu ya ipe. Yegbe bi, boseti fi kwa, awato, be, to daile, wa jo, oma anfin konkon, suri furano. Toba ansoro, olo, tadwa tadwa ni, ti sure, ti sure ni, wa ni ireo, ireo wo, ireo mo, irea ikupa leo ro. Aba ofa ikutekera o, adel, ali no kore, afu ya ipe, ala stopa, eh maro. Kuni wa wangba konkon, opo ato, I wish I have gone. I were wo fu, oba no, be, no, olabo, olidu maro, tiwa to we, asati, ala leme afiwu. Imito wa kusiba, yo jo, ashewa, ashewa, iti ke. Odu mobamo, agba, li alaro, alu kwa li ulusun, lekile kala, kote, redu elefondo, biti, tini titi, ni telai lai. Aniba onti, aniba onte, anisilete, ashewa, afayla, ojo, ojo balaa, ali tiwa she.
Asher. Asher, waya le bawa theory, eh, antem, bariye, eh, ai ma loli.
Ah, okay.
Uh huh.
Then we, we, eh ti wa, eh she, eh she, eh intebawa, to dasiku, eh she aduke o. Ah, opa, oro, almo bashile, dupe lowo woyo. Akatsi kere kolelo, pe luwa o, eh she aduke opo.
He she wa, le wa, oh ile i, eh wa. Adiga, adiga, adiga pa ye. Di ba do, eh, 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 eh. Akete, eh, eh, eh. Ashi she, ashi she, ashi she, kajoka ma. Isha, oh, eh, eh, eh. Ni je kama le, eh, eh, eh. Te siwa ju, eh, 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 eh. Ato to da, eh. Omo, eh, 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 eh. Mosi poetore, iwa ni, imole. Omo, eh, eh. Awani, imole. Omo, eh, eh.
Eh she, eh she bubule, eh she. Thank you all for coming, grateful to you all, layo lamas, layo lama, eh she kupo. Share to the maro, share. To the maro.